I have three. Did you just print your own?
Yeah.
Yeah, I printed mine.
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
No, I can borrow mine.
Sure.
Alright, as I said in the email, there's a lot, this was the tool that Ed found from Michigan in terms of evaluating superintendents. There's a lot in here. There's sections in here that especially related to business and finance, I think, that doesn't necessarily have to be this comprehensive. But at this point, I think what we thought we'd start with tonight anyway is the section on talking about student growth, which is on page 15 of that document. And so Dr. Langenfeld prepared a PowerPoint to kind of walk us through.
I kind of, it's closer that one of the things that I want to tell people is to take some grounding first, so people know where the district is then, and help us move forward. So, and then we'll get there.
Okay.
And I also, the way I laid it out is, starting with the first slide really talks about, and then you can tell me if you want to rearrange the whole thing too. In 2012, the Board of Education laid out a strategic framework and a strategic roadmap, which really defines the core purpose of why we exist around the.
I don't think your microphone's on. You move it closer.
Okay. Alright, sorry. Can you hear me? Sorry. Anyway, in 2012, the Board of Education at that time defined the mission and the core values for the district. The core purpose really being our mission is to educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. And then, at that time, the board members also defined the drivers of our words and actions, which are the core values. And we often talk about excellence, equity, and engagement in particular, but also with that framework, they talked about integrity and responsibility. So as I was thinking about tonight, I was thinking about if we took, and this is from the document, and I pulled it out of there, a resource document I found, basically to look at, is this the instrument to be used? And if so, I have in the presentation timelines and key dates that I think will be helpful for you. Also, goals and benchmarks and evidence. And I want to make sure that we're on the same pathway to make sure that what the board expectations are clear and transparent. And then looking at how the evaluation will be compiled. And I know Mr. Dorff shared something with me already, and then how it will be shared with the community. So if that works, I'd just kind of like to proceed, and then we'll move very quickly right into the document that you provided, if that is helpful. I wanted to make sure that there was a recognition that at that same time, in the strategic roadmap, the board laid out vision statements around the strategies to what we wanted for all students to create and experience. Many of them, we've always talked about engagement, collaboration, equity, and so forth, community partnerships. In addition to that, really looking at from there, a strategic roadmap in particular focused in on the allocation of resources. And we often talk about where we allocate our funding, human resources, social, political, and financial. And so I'm not going to read that all to you, but I just wanted to lay that foundation for you. I think the next piece really defines specifically where we went next. And from there, the superintendent and the team's role is to operationalize the board work. And when the board came through, we developed a strategic framework, really looking at that strategic roadmap, identifying this theory of action, clearly articulated priorities and indicators of success, and the strategies, as well as the initiatives and action steps to progress monitor. And so, within that framework, we did that and have been working this work for some time. I think one of the pieces that is really important to recognize is that we had to build capacity and infrastructure to even be able to do this around a universal curriculum, around multi-level systems of support for both behavior and academics, and even around data collection, around data warehouse, and so forth. So all of those pieces are now in place since 2012 to be able to do that. So we took the board's mission and more clearly defined what it was in terms of how we see it, and making sure that every child has what they need to be college, career, and community-ready and find their way. Then we defined a theory of action around it, and from there, created the district priorities, which are those levers that really start to drive and improve our continuous improvement cycle and drive results. So we've got academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. The next document you have, there's a link that's going to be in the job performance evaluation considerations, which actually appear in the Michigan document, in your document, under governance and board relations. And I know that's where we want to go. But I also want to point out that embedded in the document, you will find the document that defines under goal development, which is one of the responsibilities of the superintendent and the team, is to take those, goal development, and develop goals around the board's strategic framework and roadmap, which is what we've done. And we've had this document and have had this working document for a number of years, trying to work the work. And if you, you can see the four district priorities are identified along with the strategic actions, really talking about what we intend to do. The first one around academic excellence focuses in on the board priorities. Let me see if I can open it here.
Michelle, I can add just a question.
Sure.
If you go back.
Oh, sure. Now, that's a trick question.
Well, never mind.
I can try.
Well, on the PowerPoint, and I was looking at the slide that, the first one you had that had directly from the Michigan model with governance and board relations.
Yep.
You've got, you've got A2, A3, A4, and so forth. But my question is, the bullet point and the hyphen points, then where do they come from?
That, oh.
A2 goal development, I looked at the rubric that's in here, but then.
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at the rubric.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Dorff, where is the rubric? Let me see if I have it here.
It's on page four.
Let me see if I have it.
What page are you on?
I'm on page four of the superintendent, of the Michigan evaluation, yeah.
Yeah, that's taken those bullets, or the, it says it right there. If you look at highly effective, that would be really the focus of the goal, Mr. Dorff, is where I would want to go. Alignment of available resources with the district priorities. If you look at A2, highly effective.
Okay, okay.
Is that?
Got it, thank you.
And then looking at those strategies. So what I did is I went to, and I would just as soon set the goals high. And so, within that framework, that was what my thinking was. As I looked there, and I thought, you know, I think one of the important parts of this is really the clarity and transparency of how we get to those district priorities or district goals, and then really aligning those resources to make sure that we have the very best that we can. And I think that's an important part of this as well. So that's where that came from.
Thanks.
The other piece in this particular document, and strategic directions and measures, I have all of these things embedded. So I'm not going to go through that, but I thought it was a nice resource for you, if these are where we set the goals. The goals are identified in, to achieve the district priorities around literacy and mathematics, which will, would very much align with the state report card, but also with the literacy and math development and growth models that we have. In addition to that, the college and career readiness, research and evidence-based best practices around improvement of graduation rates and so forth, they're in there. So I wanted you to be aware.
So this document is your working document for the last probably two years.
At least two years, yeah. And it's got metrics in it, but maybe not as smart as we'd like them. In other words, they're not necessarily the measures and metrics exactly.
I think they're a good place to start, but there are no, there's nothing measurable there. It just says increase. I mean, I guess it is measurable if you increased it, but by how much, you know?
Right, but that's the smart part, right?
Yeah.
It's the measurable, yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Was that ever, since 2012, was that ever presented for an evaluation?
Was what?
What you're speaking of?
This.
Do we talk from these documents?
This they developed two summers ago?
I think the piece, well, I think that the piece within this framework that we've been working on, parts have been certainly brought forward to the Board of Education for different pieces. So for example, a strategic action, if you look at A2, AE2, for example, under academic excellence, talks about the multi-level systems of support. And we've had a number of reports about, within that framework of those strategies. Then embedded within there, the growth models and the NCEs are the normal curve equivalencies we've had retreats and workshops on as well, within that framework of how we're measuring STAR math, STAR literacy in separate retreats as well.
I guess my question is, anything that you're, so you're saying that said there were some measurements, there were some metrics made of literacy and math. Was it ever presented in an evaluation?
Any evaluation in front of the board?
Well, a superintendent's evaluation, I've only been part of one, but prior to that, was there ever any, was it ever part of your evaluation, any of those metrics ever before?
The individual metrics?
No. I think, and part of this is that it has taken us, this is a lot of work to develop the infrastructure to be able to take, get these measurements. So we've only started using STAR as our measurement.
Since last year.
Since last year, for instance.
I think the answer to your question is no.
No.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't, usually we haven't used any evaluative tools for anyone, for principals or anything within their evaluation. You set goals toward, but the answer is no.
Because I was confused. I was thinking that you had, just by the conversation, I just wanted to make sure, clarify.
Yep, appreciate it.
Wait, other, other levels don't have numerical scores in their reviews either?
Typically in the school improvement plan, but it's a progress toward, if that makes sense.
Well.
Don't Title I schools have specific measurable goals?
Yes, they do, absolutely.
I mean, does, does.
But it's not in the evaluation piece. Does that make sense?
So does, do we, like, does a principal get a, does a principal get a review score of 3.46, like, like everyone else in the working world, or no? Or do they just get a piece of paper with some notes?
That's, I can tell you that that changed a couple of times while I was a principal. And there was a time where you did get, you did get a rating on a four-point scale. And it was in a number of areas, mainly around the ISLIC standards. And I'm sorry, but I don't remember what ISLIC stands for, ISLLC, Interstate School Leadership Something or Other Council. But it was administrative standards, performance standards. And principals would rate themselves, both with a narrative and then a number. And then the supervisor would, would do that as well. And so, yeah, long story short, there wasn't.
Then you have, you know, supervisors change or whatever. You have, you have, hey, you've gone down three years in a row. What's going on here?
They're, right now.
To go along with just narratives.
Yeah, with the Charlotte Danielson models, for example, it's an educator effectiveness. It's, it's, it's a scale that's toward proficiency, actually very similar. This one has highly effectiveness and a point total, but it's, you can align it. You've got your basic and your distinguished on both ends of the spectrum, or not, you know, below basic kind of thing. So, let me see where we were. If I can, I'm not sure how to toggle back to this. I can't see that.
Just go that one, I think.
Is that it?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. So what I tried to do is look at the different goal development pieces, and then I've got much more coming down. I just thought it would be important to kind of walk through the different job performance evaluation considerations put out by the Michigan Association of School Boards. And that's the tool right now that we're engaging conversation around. Looking at that, the piece, I think that, I had some questions that I think would be very helpful for me as we move forward within this framework, to think about not only the goal development, but the transparency, which would be a highly effective piece, to be able to make sure that everyone is very clear on where the resources are. I had a nice conversation with John Cashett, who offered his services to talk with anyone and everyone about the alignment of resource. And we'll talk a little more when we get to finance. As far as the information goes, the first one talks about policy involvement, and obviously, legal counsel takes a very important role in that, in terms of making sure we're on point for policy. And that's why I didn't include that one in there. I know there's a lot of, but if you'd like me to add it back in, I'd certainly be fine with that. But the goal development, I think, is very important, and that alignment of resources is very critical. Information is another area that I think, making sure that the board is satisfied with the current level of communication. But always looking to say, where else can we improve, is something that I would be very interested. And I know that in conversations with all of us, we want to make sure that we have the most up-to-date information for the board as well, so that you feel that you have the capacity to move successfully in your roles. So that would be an area, as you look at that particularly one, I'd be interested in that, in getting more feedback. The same holds true for A4. And I think A5 is one of those pieces that often we have conversations and some confusion around that would be helpful for clarity around, when is it a board question, and what is the scope and expectation in response, you know, some, as the board asks a question, to make sure we have a clear understanding of what the board is expecting. And then, how do we, how do we balance that between an individual board member question and the board questions? I think that's something that often comes up, because we want to thoroughly communicate and make sure that everyone has a shared understanding, so. So that would be an area of consideration. And I don't know that there's a metric with that, but just greater clarity on the part of the board. Is that, you know, is that?
Can I just say, though, I feel like some of this could actually just be very anecdotal, and, you know, to my opinion, it's not necessarily the case. I think it's hard to think about how, and maybe this is something we don't measure, but I feel like some of this, it's, again, it's not that different than what we talked about in January. It's how are you feeling about something?
Hang tight, because as we go through here, you're going to see that there are, and I'd agree for maybe that one, that's correct, and it's basically anecdotal. But as you go into this, and you see the other components, they are, they're more objective measures than.
Right.
And again, look across, look at, look at the rubrics themselves. You know, if we look at A5, from left to right, you know, we would be able to have discussion around those things.
To me, A6 doesn't belong in the superintendent's evaluation. I think whatever the board does or doesn't do for board development is the board's decision. I mean, maybe with advice from the superintendent, but a board might want to do a lot of board development, or a board might think that many board development opportunities are just meetings where you learn to do the party line thing, the don't rock the boat, and the don't tell, whatever. It just seems to me, maybe the board would want to do a lot of development, but I don't see that as a duty of the superintendent. I see that as a duty of the board.
My thought on, on this entire model was that, as we look at each of these sections, and you see on the note that I sent you, descriptors of professional practice, what I am recommending in terms of their priority and the weight that they're given, and there's one through five there, we would, as a board go through here, and I'm just looking at board relations, I took governance out of it altogether, just the board relations, and have that discussion. Andrew, no, we don't think A6 is necessary in there. We may end up with, with only four descriptors. Yeah, I think the rubrics are great. I don't, I don't see a need to do a lot around the rubrics. Somebody put a lot of time and effort into that. And writing good rubrics is a very, very difficult process. I've had some experience with that. But for every one of them, you would look at, at our board meeting and doing the evaluation, having discussion around that, and coming to an agreement on where that rating would be. My feeling on rubrics has always been that if you haven't hit every single thing in that rubric, you can't, you can't rate it there. I mean, you've got, let's say you've got four things listed as a number four. If you got three out of four, you don't get the four. You've got to have all four. I'm kind of digressing here, but.
But again, we're still kind of just giving our opinion. There's really nothing that is measured, that's provided, that has nothing to do with us, that we can actually show as.
But sometimes, I mean, some things you can't. I mean, like, you know, I guess, if we're going to have, I mean, example I'd use is, like legislative advocacy. You can't, I don't think you would want to reduce that to numbers even if you wanted to, because then you could, I mean theoretically, right? I mean, we don't want to say a four means you went to Madison and lobbied six times, or, you know, or we got, you know what I mean? Other things, maybe, but some, I just don't know how you quantify certain things.
I don't know why you even talk about that.
There are parts within this that.
Legislative advocacy? It's really important.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, but at the same time, I, yes, it is. But what I'm saying is, then you wouldn't measure that?
How would you? How would you measure it other than to make a judgment call based on the total scope of things?
And how would you measure it? Like, how would you measure it? Would you look at?
I don't think you could. I think that's one of the things that has to be more of a judgment call.
Which is part of the evaluation.
Right.
But we can't measure it.
What we're looking at here, Rhonda, is a combination of subjective and objective.
Otherwise, because I don't want to.
Let me finish, Andrew. The component one, professional practice, Michigan recommended 65% of that, that that be weighted to 65% of the evaluation. My recommendation is 50%. There are things that can be quantified. There are some things that certainly are going to be more anecdotal. But if you go to the second page, that note I passed around, and I should not have put confidential on there, cross that out. But component two, 40% of the evaluation on student learning and growth, every single thing on there is attached to numbers. Component three, district goals, you know, between that one and student learning, you've got 50% of the evaluation would be based on numbers.
Okay, so those four things are?
Achievement, growth, gap closing, on-track readiness. That's right off the state report card. The component three, district goals, and these are things that we had included in the evaluation in January, open enrollment, climate and culture, open enrollment. Those are numbers, climate and culture, the numbers based on the surveys. And then, going back again to the state report card, student engagement indicators, absenteeism and dropouts.
Okay, but that's not what was sent to us in our email. That's why I wasn't.
Well, the email wasn't intended to be all encompassing. It's just giving you a sense of.
So it's somehow combining all of this together?
Yes.
We would have to set, I think we would have, we would have to, and one is the growth.
Yeah, that has to be determined.
What is a, what's a, what's a four, what's a three, what's a two?
The point that's being made here is that there are three major components, professional practice, student learning, and district goals. Two out of the three, 50% of them are measurable, specifically measurable.
Well, these are. I'm just looking at this. None of this, this is all just kind of anecdotal for the most part. This is, this is more.
But it's important work, but these anecdotal pieces are important work.
The difference I would offer is.
It's just that it's not, doesn't provide any, any, like Andrew said, I don't want to say you have to go to Madison eight times, otherwise you get two.
That's actually something that doesn't even, that's the least actually of my concern, is that, is that part of it. It just seems like it's a lot of opinion. And that's what it seems like.
There is, there's really.
This is not. This is.
If you didn't do, if you didn't do some of these, and if you don't, if you don't like the legislative, as the example, then, fine. But if you, you know, I don't, I wouldn't want to have something where.
Let me.
If you have the, if you get the, if the test scores, if the test scores go up, that's great, we're done.
Let me give you an example. Test scores are one part of what's important for this role. I think of the superintendent, for example, down in the Fenimore area. They are blue ribbon schools. They're highly, highly, highly successful academically. Here's the problem. They're in a community where open enrollment and vouchers and that whole piece has really had a very, very deleterious and detrimental effect on the community. That superintendent needs to be telling that story as well in Madison, to be fighting for resource and money to support that school district. Otherwise, it doesn't matter what the test scores are if no students are going to school there. So I think that there's opportunity. I would, I would expect that this evaluation would be not only for me personally, but it would be for the next superintendent and the next. You want to invest. And, and I think that there are pieces, to your point, Rhonda, and I agree, there are some very, very measurable anchors in here. With survey data, we have some really, really important ones. But I wouldn't want to also not include at least goals, some goals around some of the areas, to make sure that you have that advocacy piece for a superintendent to be out there fighting for resources and supports, and against things that are detrimental to your teachers. Another example, I think of when we had, and some of you may recall, the State Department coming in and expecting our English language students to take the test in an electronic version of interpretation. And it was a British accent with, with, with Spanish. You couldn't even understand or comprehend it. And we went to the State Department and pushed back. And actually, they had rules in place. We actually went to the federal government, to the Department of Justice and the Office of Civil Rights to fight for our kids. So sometimes there's things, and they extended the time then across the state so that it could be read to them by a person who spoke Spanish and not an electronic version. So sometimes there are things really important to the well-being of kids that you can't always measure, that come up legislatively. And it's not necessarily, it's just a small part of, and I think, Ed, you said that, well, it's just a small part, but it needs, I really, I would, would believe in this political landscape that we currently live in, that that's, that has to be part of the success to, of this role.
So make sure, I just want to make sure I understand, what, what are we deciding or discussing? Are we just trying to decide what we're going to include?
Yes.
Are we making a decision tonight on that? Or are we just discussing it?
Well, I think right now, we're looking at the overview. I, I would hope that we would be able to walk away and say that, you know, either in whole or part, and then, you know, you know, you say that A6 doesn't, have some discussion on that strike. And I mean, it's a good starting off point. I do want to say that in all of these, you know, elements here of professional practice, instructional leadership, staff and community relations, board relations, they do require a judgment call. And that's us, and we have to make that judgment call. Some of these things you can't, we are going to assign a number to it, but there is no empirical evidence beyond our experience to say that it is happening or it isn't happening. One other thing to consider, as you look at these rubrics, and if you go down the right-hand column with highly effective, you can consider that a job description or a set of job expectations. These are. These are the things we accept out of a superintendent. A five, we expect that board questions are answered thoroughly with communication to all members to ensure understanding. And if that's not happening, then we should have some documentation showing that and to be able to say that, you know. I, I know, Michelle, that, you know, last month, only three board members got this information when we were all supposed to have it. That's not satisfactory. Let's move on. But they do require judgment calls and, and we can't shrink, nor should we shrink from that to make informed judgments on those.
We also might have judgment, I mean, part of the point of the elected board is different, different people with, like, different, different perspectives. You might be.
Different experiences, absolutely.
You might be, and we're going to hear, you know, some of these things are going to be based on what we're, what we're hearing in the public. And we might get different public feedback, which would legitimately cause people to rate differently and have room for discussion there.
Yeah, because I.
Look at community relations is a.
Right, yeah, I would see the, the process of how this goes. And when we've used rubrics in the past, all seven board members individually fill out their rubric. And so that allows for exactly what you said, Andrew, is the differences in opinions. And then, you know, those are averaged in, and, you know, a, a board numbered in terms of the average of, of all of our ratings would come up. And then in the evaluation itself, if there's areas where, you know, the average is way different than what you, you know, you personally have on there and you want to talk about it, then you just bring that up and you have conversation about it. But I think that that's, that's the, that's how I would see us handling the, the part of this that isn't actually numbers, that, that you pull out of a computer. It, it is our, you know, each individual person's judgment as to whether the superintendent is meeting the expectations that we've set in these areas.
I mean, and I, and that's fine. I just feel like, you know, it's definitely very, a lot of this can be very subjective, so.
But how would you, I mean, how would you, I, I would love it if we could measure the, these, some of these things, but how would you do it?
I mean, as long as we can just be honest and say it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that's primarily component one. The other two components have more.
Yeah, well, and by having a rubric, it becomes a little less objective.
It really does, yeah.
Than, than, you know, just stating opinions, because we're all reacting to exactly the same measures of what's effective, what's highly effective.
So you said you actually had, used metrics prior in evaluations?
Way back.
We've had, yeah.
So why did you change, or why did you let go of those?
Because a previous, a previous superintendent asked us to.
So you haven't used metrics since?
No, we, we've used them sort of, so.
We've had, we've had rubrics and metrics before.
Okay, so why did you stop?
Because it, it, um, it, um, didn't feel productive, I guess, is.
Why are we doing it? I mean, if, if we stopped for a reason, why, why are we bringing it back?
Well, we didn't have, this is way, much more extensive than what we had before. What we had before, these are much better than what we had before. And we also did not have the, it was mostly the first five things on this list. And we did not have the, the growth and, and metrics on that at all.
Are we still using the Danielson, okay, have, have you had a chance to see that at all, the Danielson model for supervision evaluation? This is a mirror of that. It, it's a mirror of what we are using in classrooms. There are four domains that are looked at, and in each of the domains, there are a number of elements. And then there's rubrics that, it's laid out just like this.
Very similar.
And teachers have the opportunity, I'm looking on page six right now, to provide artifacts that support what they believe they've accomplished.
So are we going to include that, or is that, you said that's similar to?
That's what our teachers, that's how our teachers get evaluated.
It basically mirrors that.
Okay, so it's basically just, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's the same kind of process that is used with, with teaching staff.
And when would we be doing this again?
In January is when we formally evaluate the superintendent once a year.
So you don't do it twice? I thought you did it twice a year.
We do, we were doing two, but one of, one of them was a, one of them was in, was a formative.
Formative.
Much less formal, and then the official was in January.
When is the much less formal one happening?
July.
We've done it in June or July, yeah.
And so are we not talking about that at all?
Well, I, I'd like to suggest that, you know, if we adopt this and we go ahead and, and restructure this model, that as a baseline, we use it in July. Realizing that the data are what they are. I mean, that's, you know, we, we can't be looking for a lot of improvement because we don't have that down there as a previous one, but we've got that baseline. And then, you know, come January, we'll have the seventeen, eighteen data to, to put in there, so.
So you're suggesting using this in July and in January?
Yeah.
And not having the formative?
But that.
Well, you, you could use this as a formative.
Right, right.
But not the summative would be in January.
You couldn't include that?
Yes, you could, as much as possible.
You would, you would collect the baseline data and that would give you the metrics and then you would know, you know. We would have, we have some growth data, you know, and that's the data from one point to the next point. So you could see what students did throughout this school year. So we can include the N C E growth data and then also talk about the plan that we're looking at for the different grade levels at elementary and, and middle and high school and what that looks like to be able to move that data. And to move not necessarily that data, our students forward in their growth and development. And that's very doable. And then the survey data should be very helpful. You can see where we were and where we've gone to help move to the next step. I think what, what would be important is that the, the smart part, the measurable part for the goals is to really put those numbers out there so that people see, here's the number, here's the target of where we want to head within that framework. And really thinking out, and we've talked about this in our own work, is, you know, when we're looking right now, for example, at phonemic awareness for literacy, recognizing that's such a foundational piece for our little ones. And the acknowledgement that we need to be a hundred percent basically, or as close to a hundred percent as possible as the target before they finish first grade. And that will put them on the right trajectory for, for reading. Otherwise, if we're there not, then we have to figure that out as well. But really starting to put out some, some important hard data around that as well, I think is important.
Are we going to do anything with the, the staff surveys, the climate and culture surveys? Are we going to put rubrics to that as well?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's a number, but are we going to assign, you know, similar to this?
What, what we would do in a kind of, it's, it's embedded in here and kind of buried.
The survey comes with rubrics.
I mean, I know it's a number, but there, you know, it's.
Yes, well, we set goals. We would set goals around that. So for example, I'm kind of getting ahead, but if you, if we want to talk about that piece, if you go toward the end of the PowerPoint.
We could set goals with the survey of, you know, a certain increase in, you know, the previous year kind of goal.
Yeah, just way towards the very. So, so what it would do, what it would do, Rhonda, is right now we would look at, we've got two dimensions right now. And we'll bring this forward in July. The district composite score, we have the fall, we did the fall survey around school climate. And then into the spring, so we would be able to see the improvement.
It's like three pages from the end, yeah.
It looks like this. I apologize. I didn't put numbers on them. It's toward the end. But just to give you a framework of what, what we were thinking, you would have the, the stakeholder groups and then they're identified there. And then we would look at where they were in the fall when they took the survey and where they are in the spring in terms of relationship dimension, in terms of teaching and learning and safety. And so we have that data that we'll be bringing forward in July and that will all be populated. But that's the kind of thing, then you set the goals accordingly. And then what we would want to do is make sure that each school look deeper into their data. Because some schools obviously are in a, a different place than other schools, and we see that when we look deeper into the data as well. So that they may have some, some bigger issues or they may be more successful. And we need to learn why they are more successful to make sure, you know, they're, that they're in alignment. One of the things that we do see when we look at the survey data, sometimes there's a disconnect between how a student feels for safety and how a teacher feels for safety and how a parent. And they're not all the same number, and I know Gwen showed you some of that. But that would be a real important piece is if you have that gap, why is that? And really start to understand those relationships around culture, climate. So yes, this is a metric that we should be held accountable for, absolutely. And that will be part of the data set that I would propose that be, I don't know where it fits in this document, but it needs to.
It would be.
It would be under the climate and culture.
Yeah.
I think it's important, there's more.
Yes, yes, three.
There's more to that, there is more to that than the district composites though, because one.
Absolutely.
One huge, one huge high school where everyone's extremely happy and feels safe could easily mask six small elementary schools where people don't. So the, the spread of scores among the buildings is, is important too.
One of the ways that, that question, I'm glad you brought that up, is addressed in this particular model. I'll find the page here.
Okay, that makes very good sense, Andrew.
If you look on page fifteen, when we look at progress toward district-wide goals, now this is just the way that they've laid it out. They've laid it out the same way for student growth and for district-wide goals.
Yeah.
Is saying progress was made on the goals, ninety percent or more of the goals. Progress was made on, you know, seventy-five to eighty-nine percent. So if you talk about a composite score, you could say, all right, to be highly effective, you know, we saw an increase in ninety percent or more of the sites. I mean, again, just for discussion, because your point is well taken.
I agree.
The average doesn't tell you the whole story. This would tell you that, all right, well, ninety percent of the, of the score, of the schools regardless of size, ninety percent of the sample regardless of size, short increase, whatever that increase might be.
Grew or were already well into the above-average range.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I think that's, that's, that makes really good sense. Does that help? Would it be help? I, I don't know how you'd like to perceive it. I want to kind of jump around and I want to make sure that I.
We kind of hijack, or I hijacked you, so.
Well, but, but this is for, for, for you to provide me with direction, so I want to make sure that, that you're, you're where you want to be. The next job performance evaluation consideration is around the community relations piece. And I don't know if we're ready to move forward or not out of governance and, and removing that, we're just board relations.
Sure.
We're good? In the community relations, those are the buckets that we do have document, documentation around parent feedback through that survey tool. That would be the, that would be the, the, the quantitative piece. There's obviously, there's a quantitative piece with titled schools as well that they have surveys. So there are two, two survey documents. What I've started to do is use the parent advisory for feedback and survey tool as well, almost like focus groups. Done that a couple of times to get their feedback. So those are real quantitative items that we could set measures and metrics around in terms of how they feel about different things. The piece that I would offer is the survey really depends on what we're trying to measure. In this particular culture, climate, we're measuring those things around relationships and teaching and learning and safety. But if there are other areas we want to measure in addition to that, we would have to shift that survey right now. As we don't measure beyond that piece. In communication with community, just examples of publications are listed there for, for your review. And then in community feedback, again, we've had, we have the, the survey tools we've used for a variety of things. And again, right now, we don't have a community-wide survey. We did when we did the facilities. Before we went out for referendum, we did a, a, a community-wide survey and to every community member in the district for feedback.
What did that cost to do that?
I really don't recall. I'd have, I, I can find that all for you if you'd like. Be happy to do that.
They sent out postcards, but then it was all mostly electronic.
It was done electronically, but it was multiple, it was translated, if I'm not mistaken, as well.
I have a couple of things about, do you want to do all of B first and then I have some comments on B?
Whatever you're comfortable with. The other piece of B goes to media relations and district image and approachability. So those were the pieces within that framework that they identified. And those were the bullets that I pulled out from the document as well that seemed to be, to resonate as areas to really look a little more deeply into.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So, okay, so I guess, you know, some of these community relations, I don't, I, I, this isn't really the, I don't think to rewrite rubrics. But if you look at, if you look at B five, the one for ineffective, which keep in mind that is still, that is still points. You, you, you can't get zero points in any category. You will still get a one, meaning the scale is from one to four at the end, not zero. Or, I mean, it becomes a percentage, but, okay, if, B five, if you are, if a superintendent and we've never had one like this, you or anyone else that I know, but is, if the one point is, is indifferent or negative about the district, does not speak well or represent the district well in front of groups, as far as I'm concerned, if that is, if that's true, you're fired. Even if the test scores are great. I think that doesn't adequately, actively promote the district, that's your one. And the same thing, if you are neither visible nor approachable by members of the community, which is not the case here, and I don't think it's been the case with superintents in the past either, if you are not visible and not approachable, I think you should be, it's not a one. I think it's a, you're fired. And I think visible but not necessarily approachable, that's, that or something like that is your one. I'd say the same thing about parents and the goal setting. I think the one, the, the two doesn't, two is still, doesn't engage parents in district-wide goal setting. That's a, that's ineffective to me. So I don't think we have to hash it all out today. I'm just thinking this, more so this one than other areas. It's a little, you can get away with a, a lot and still have a two.
I, I don't think so. The one is, I mean, that's, that's the bottom. I mean, that, that's your baseline. If you go with a zero, you're either adding another rubric.
Oh, no, I'm not saying it goes, I'm thinking you, you rewrite, you rewrite the two or the three and just slide it over because some of these twos are bad enough to be a one, in my opinion. Especially parent feedback. If you accept number, so a two in parent feedback, accepts suggestions and input but fails to seek it, does not engage parents in district-wide goal setting, shouldn't that be a one?
As you go along, and then you start with the one being the, the worst-case scenario, each successive point adds something to the mix till you get to highly effective and then you want them to have all of these things aligned.
Oh, yeah, I just don't think you should get half your, your points for, does, for something where you're not even engaging parents, but.
You don't.
Yep, you get half your, a two is half your points in that area.
Oh, I thought you were looking at one.
So what?
Well, but it's, it's also, I mean, this isn't plug the numbers, you know, give a score and go home. I mean, evaluations consist of narrative and, and opinions and, and all of that.
Okay, I mean.
I mean, it, did you.
I understand your point, but I.
I get it too, but did you look at?
I don't want to get into rewriting all these things either.
Yeah, and I mean, and it's true with most of these that are ones, you know, if, if you're not doing this, that's a problem. You look at staff relations, I mean, I wouldn't want superintendent.
Well, the ones are titled ineffective, so, I mean, that's not a.
Yeah, yeah.
Something to.
Yeah, but you can get a, you can get a lot of twos on this. If your, if your test scores go up, you can get a lot of, a lot of twos for not giving a rip about, again, not, this is happening, not at all. But you can get away with a lot of not really giving a rip or being available for parents. given a rip or being available for parents, and if your test scores go up, that's gonna balance, that's gonna balance you back to a, I just think it's so, it's so hard, and maybe it's supposed to be that hard to get a, a one, I don't know, but.
It's also supposed to be hard to get a four.
Right.
It's fair, yeah.
It's supposed to be hard to get a four. I think that I would offer that you try to use the rubric and then see if it isn't effective enough.
Well, if you, but you really, you really don't wanna change it, because you wanna have apples to apples from year to year, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go to the, the mat over rewriting rubrics, 'cause I don't really wanna do it either, so.
Or you don't.
The piece that I would ask or offer is that it would be then very hopeful if, let's say, let's say I would be minimally effective, that we would have an opportunity then for corrective action and define specific steps about expectations. If someone were to score in the twos, to how to, how to move to a more effective route and, and what recommendations or suggestions does one have. I think that in a district our size is very interesting to, to be visible. I can be out on a weekend, like I often am, and there's a lot of people who don't know I'm out there. On the other hand, it's, it's been interesting, when I have gone to farmer's market or posted, I've had some interesting things occur that are concerning, because people know where I'm at. And, yeah, so it's, it's a really, it's a really interesting time.
Well, in this process, a lot of the things that you would.
I'll share later.
The artifacts, you know, when I look at community relations, there's, there's eight of them listed, but, you know, other things, copies of your calendar, what have you, to that point about the community events, the weekend events, those sorts of things. Obviously, you know, you don't have seven of us following you around, you know, twenty-four-seventy, you know, that. And then for anybody with a process like this, it is incumbent on them to provide those artifacts.
Sure.
So that would, that would show evidence that, yes, indeed, I have been actively doing this out in the community.
Right.
Go ahead, Andrew.
That's one of my biggest concerns about this, is that, I'll just give myself an, as an example, a year ago, I couldn't have probably given an accurate description of what Michelle's job is, what that job requires, and, and all the various aspects of it. And even a year later, I'm pretty sure there's things about, you know, the, the things that you are, have to do in the course of a day or a week or a month that I'm, I'm not aware of. So in future board members who come on and don't have that full understanding, are not gonna be able to maybe take this on and be really accurate about.
Well, there's, and there are, there are board evaluations that I've seen where you have to have been on the board for a year before you're part of giving feedback, of the evaluation process.
Yeah, but maybe that's why you got elected, though.
Ah, Andrew, I mean, be realistic about your average citizen coming on. It's great and all that they get elected, but will they really, would your average citizen, no.
Well, we're talking January, right?
Cause you've been part of this, you've been on this board a long time. I mean, I, I, I don't feel like I've always, short of following Michelle around for, like, a couple weeks, I don't know that I.
That's a discussion score, too. I mean, I've changed, I mean, I've changed, when we were doing Intermountain, I've changed threes to a four after discussion, or, you know, I've, I've certainly, certainly done that. And also, there's the, I think there's some protection since you're at least beginning by working off an average. If someone is, you know, way out there or, you know, just agenda-driven to give ones on everything, that's gonna be pretty clearly.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we do that, I'm just saying that that was one thing I ran across.
I just know that when I talk to people in the community who wanna have that discussion about what the superintendent does, they're often surprised when I say, well, this is actually what that entails, this is actually what we need her to do, this is actually how she spends her time. It's a huge job and it's a huge scope of responsibility, and they often wanna narrow it quite a lot. So, I don't know, I, for, for future board members who are just average citizens, this would, I think, might be kinda challenging, that's all.
You would be nine months in, though, if we were doing Intermountain in January, you would be, if you were elected at the normal time, you would have.
That's true.
You would have that.
You would have artifacts and.
The PowerPoint, that's just for tonight's presentation?
Yeah, what I just tried to do is kinda break it out, give you some examples.
Cause if you were gonna show it anywhere else, I, I think a big piece of community relations that's missing on here is a bullet, is the, all the different engagement sessions that you've scheduled and all the, the task force participation.
Right, and the parent.
So you can hear the input that way.
Well, that would be, that would show up with the, with the artifacts and the.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I, I.
Communication with the community, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a specific.
No, I'm just, in terms of the bullets that she's got on the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was thinking through just, just a couple of different areas, and I think that there's always room for improvement. We actually, I, I, I look for more opportunities because I see how engaged our community becomes when we invite them. You know, I really feel, and the parent advisory that I have is, is good, but again, it isn't all parents typically, it's, some schools are well represented always and others not so much. But I think the piece that, that I'm gonna go to in the, the budgeting process, I wanna talk a little bit about that, and we're not there yet, but I'll talk about community engagement in the budgeting process. I wanna talk about how I would like to envision where that could or should go in the future. So I don't know, we've got, we've got staff relations, are we, where, where are we at with community? Are we good?
Good.
With the rubric? In staff relations, I think that the piece that I would go back to that, that is important is the highly effective staff feedback, where the teachers often, in a, in a model like ours, actively, the decisions and the pieces of staff being actively involved in supporting district-wide goals is somewhat challenging for a variety of reasons. So, for example, now, I'm coming back with these goals, and for me to achieve these goals and have literacy and mathematics, I have to share that information and with the expectation, so they haven't had a part of the goals. The goals are coming from me, and I'm getting them actually from the state, really, you know, by that state report card, that that's defining who we are through these metrics. And I think that as a school looks at their school improvement plans, they're, they're choosing within that framework of their school improvement. But I'm not sure, when I look at this, is how does, how does, how do we create that sense of autonomy that our, our professionals need to feel and have while at the same time have that, we, we're sandwiched with pressures from the state and federal government, but I, I really are. And, and one of the things that you see in highly, highly, highly effective states or communities, I'm, I'm thinking of Finland, for example, they've done some things nationally that have helped impact teacher training, for example. What I read recently is they took all of their university systems and condensed their training programs to eight different schools. That's it. And that's all you can go to. In doing so, they have a highly, highly, highly trained group of staff, and then they let them go. And they're doing swell, is from what I can tell in terms of their success. So there's less coming from the district. The district, it, it was an interesting piece to think about, that the district, the State Department doesn't take much on either anymore. Now, the state is saying to the districts, you figure out educator effectiveness and be held accountable. You figure out how to do teacher licensing now, because it's, and you decide if this, these teachers are highly qualified or not. So what happens is, all of a sudden, this comes onto the district, and we're trying to figure all this stuff out, and then we come top-down. And that's really not as successful as involving teachers in making these decisions. And I, that's something I've wrestled with a long time, and I, I, you know, for, for, for educators, we, we often wrestle with this, because I can't tell you how many times I've sat in rooms, especially this year, I, before Amanda went off the, her role, and she and I went into schools and talked in, in, in spaces with teachers, you, you recognize the fatigue around assessment and the, you know, some of the pieces that teachers are feeling. So that was one that I, I keep looking at and saying, how do we, how do we address that differently? I struggle with that one, 'cause I wanna be able to afford that autonomy to the professionals.
It is a, the political environment we're in right now, there's, I don't know that there's any help for it.
Right.
I mean, that, that's, that's the hand we've been dealt. And, you know, I, I've always thought that, you know, since we have that, the autonomy really needs to be more around the how as opposed to the what.
To the what.
We, we can't, we can't control that, I mean, it, it's a state function, and the state says this is what.
Right.
We are going to say is important, whether we agree with it or not, that's what we're gonna be measured on, and it'll be in the papers. I'd sure like to be able to see a, see us get back to a time where there's more autonomy around, around the how.
Well, you, you know, yeah. Okay, you share that, but I'm glad, yeah, that's the piece I look at and say, I don't know how that ever can happen, where you have, there are certain areas of decisions that are just put upon. And that's, we struggle with that, so. We've been trying to keep the staff updated through the staff scoop, that's usually the, the place, but it doesn't always meet everyone's needs, so we, we look to improve that. And I think that that's, that's ongoing in terms of wanting to make sure staff are as informed as possible about changes, but that's a, a challenge to cascade information and make sure it gets to everyone. I think we've improved, but I don't think we're there yet, so we continue to work in that area. In terms of personnel, I think we're quite proactive, but again, making sure that we always are responsive where we should be. And I think HR does a really nice job in partnership with our different groups, and I know Katie, I don't know who else is meeting with the different groups that we have, to keep those relationships, that are very important.
I, I would like to maintain C three in, in the instrument for the superintendent. I mean, granted, we've got a, a pretty impressive system there with personnel, but I, I, I think it's really critical, and keep in mind, you know, when, when we did the evaluation in January, one of the things that we said was, we wanna see the superintendent more involved with principal hires.
Absolutely. I agree.
And, and, you know, you've really gotta have a handle on what's going on in personnel issues. You know, that, what we see in, in, you know, I'm looking at C three right now, concerns around consistency, fairness and discretion, impartiality, that really needs to be addressed, so.
I agree.
The hiring piece would be in recruitment, right?
That would be hiring, yeah.
Our recommendation for the principal part, I get what you're saying about the, the other thing.
Mm-hmm.
Do you wanna take a break?
Yeah.
Alright.
Sounds good to me.
Why don't we just take a break?
Take a break.
Alright.
Just like that.
Alright. Okay, where do you wanna go next?
So, why don't we?
Can we review, like, what we've decided, or, it's a good idea?
Yeah, we haven't changed the, we're not rewriting rubrics, but we get that if there's, if things are headed towards a one, they're probably, hopefully, probably have already been addressed earlier to.
Right, if it, it's, cause it's ineffective.
But a lot of these one, I mean, some of these ones are so blatantly bad, I would think you would have done a formal warning about, I mean, you know, doesn't, doesn't accept or engage parents. If we get that over and over again and find out that the superintendent wasn't, that would be a written warning, I would think.
Evaluation time is not the first time a person should hear that they're.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so are we including everything that we see in the Michigan document?
Well, here's what I've got so far on, on, I mean, if we went with the board relations, Michelle had A, two, three, four, five, and six, and we talked about striking six, so I got two, three, four, five. For community relations, we kept one through six, kept them all.
But did we decide to strike?
In board development, because that's, that's our prerogative to do a lot or a little.
So we don't have, we're not doing A one or A six.
The only one is money.
It doesn't preclude a superintendent from still wanting to have an educated board and providing that, but we're just not expecting it, we're not evaluating.
And we could, right, it's, it's, it's more, yeah, it's more up to, I mean, an educated board has, can mean a couple of different things.
Yeah, the piece that I would want to be sure of is the, the last part of number four, A six, number four, ensures funding is aligned to board development plans. So if, for whatever reason, there's going to be some significant additional resources needed, that's what I need to make sure that you have.
Sure.
So, but if, so you'll have to tell, that's all.
And we were in C, we were in staff relations, and I, I would like to see us keep C three in there, so that in mind, we would have C one through seven.
What about four? Can we talk about C four?
Should we strike A one and A six?
Yeah, yeah.
We struck A one?
Yeah.
I missed that. Oh, right, right.
Put both Bs.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're to staff relations, alright, Rhonda?
So delegation of duties, the low end is, doesn't delegate duties, the high end is, delegates responsibility to staff. Can we talk about that?
I have a question mark on that, too.
I'll talk to you more about.
Do we want everything delegated? Is that the goal?
We want, what I want is to have people in positions that are highly capable to do the work, and I expect the superintendent to delegate those responsibilities. Because in a district our size, the superintendent can't possibly do all of the work. So that's why we have, you know, student service director, why we have some.
Right, but I mean, I guess it's, it's kind of, maybe it's not even really, I guess it's, it's an interesting question with interesting answers, I guess.
Can you not, can you, could, could the superintendent not get a four if hypothetically they had to take on a real lot of duties onto their own shoulders because, because they're filled, they're making that, and again, this is not the, the case here and now, but can a superintendent not earn the four even though they're bustin' tail doing three or four people's jobs because they can't delegate to a bunch of people?
Historically, we have actually had, at least I can think of one superintendent in particular, who did a lousy job of delegating.
That's.
Control issues, so I think that needs to.
But that's diff, that's different, what if, what if this.
But I think then we would have the understanding that the person, it's, it's not a matter of not delegating, it's filling in the gap until the right person can be assigned those tasks.
Since you can't, since it takes a very long time to move someone out, so that could lead to people taking a lot onto their own. I just would hate to, I would not wanna see a superintendent who's taking extra on their shoulders, doing extra because of someone else not pulling their weight that they can't do anything about for a long time, not get the max rating, that's all.
So you're, you're a proponent of delegation, but what I'm hearing is, is you've got concerns with delegation.
No, how would I really know if there was delegation? That's what I, I mean, I don't really, couldn't answer that question, honestly.
Part, part of it would be, are you able to go to someone and get appropriate answers? Mike Stengel in facilities, can you get answers about facilities? Does he have, and it goes to his job description, does he, is he able to successfully complete the, the, the expectations for his job? And the piece that I'm responsible for is to make sure that he has what he needs to be successful in his job. So that would be one example. Another example is, is Vicky Byer would be another. Another example is, is Vicky Byer would be another good example where she has the responsibility about, around safety, security pieces, that's, and, and student services. And then I'm responsible for making sure she has what she needs to be successful. It's a combination of talking through and meeting on a regular basis with folks and understanding where they're at. Because I have a responsibility to help their professional development and growth as well. To shepherd them and support them in their own leadership and decision-making. And afford them that autonomy to be able to do that, so it's a balance.
There are a couple of things that are cited as far as artifacts at the top of page nine that can.
Be helpful.
Yeah, certainly be helpful with that. I mean, for one thing, not just third-party survey data, but the, the survey data that are used. If, if you get a lot of people saying that they can't, aren't allowed to make decisions, then you start questioning whether we're delegating appropriately. Staff meeting agendas and minutes can provide a lot of evidence about people's ability to make decisions. I, I can think of various times in my career where the same agenda item came up, you know, every three months for several years because people who were supposed to make a decision didn't feel they could make a decision. And it goes back to what you were alluding to, where every decision had to be made by one person.
Right.
Which really slowed things down.
If you saw the, if, if, for example, hypothetically, every single report from every division was given by the superintendent and the department head was sat there, but the superintendent did all or almost all of their talking in all fields, that, that would be a clear not delegating plague.
Right, and I get all that. The question is, the question that I have is, I'm going to know if there's delegating happening because I've asked enough questions, but most of the time we're directed not to ask questions. That it's actually to direct people to the principal or, you know, if you looked at that chain of command or communication, we're number six. So, if I'm not asking, asking questions, how am I going to know if there's delegation happening necessarily?
I think part of it is if, if a question comes the way, my way and I look and I say, John, this is yours. I mean, this morning I was in a meeting and he's going to follow up on it. There are certain things within his purview that are his responsibility, that that's how you would know. Or for example, I know we had a communication, actually it was Mike Stengel who needed to answer you and I said, Mike needs to answer you, that's so, I delegated it back because he would know the answer far better than me. It was, I can't remember what it was about.
But I guess, right, but if, if I'm following the chain of command, then I'm not actually ever really asking administrators anything.
I, I don't know that it's a chain of command, it's, it's communication.
The chain of command, well, probably no one. I mean, at some point, you're not supposed to even be there. Everything's supposed to go down the chain of command. And then for me to answer that question honestly, if I'm following the chain of command, I don't really have a lot of contact with administrators if I'm following the chain of command.
If you had a legal question, you would call Melissa. If you had a teaching and learning question, you would probably call John. If you had a student service question, call Vicky, that's what.
Right, but I mean, if I'm following the chain of command, typically you're directing people to talk to their building principal, correct?
If the issue is a school-related issue that has to do with something in the school about a teacher, I might, you know, that's, I, I think, maybe give me an example.
If delegation is taking place, then you do start, if, and are you, as a board member, as a parent, who are you?
Board member, doing an evaluation, I just, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, when I ask, when I answer these, I'm not just, okay, I'll do that one.
A different superintendent might never say, talk to John, talk to Vicky, that's facilities, talk to Mike Stengel. A different, a different superintendent might say, please talk to just me, I will go get those answers and, and give them to you, which is not what's happening here.
Right, so we're keeping C four?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, I just, I, I, yeah.
Well, and I don't think it's a, in the delegation, in terms of that chain of communication, it doesn't mean we can't, you know, have Congress, I mean, we visit schools, like, we have conversation with principals, we have conversation, you know, with, with teachers and whoever else is in, in a school. Doesn't mean we can't have those conversations, it just means that if there are concerns, we don't then turn around and, and start asking questions about the concerns. We turn it over to, you know, we usually report it to Dr. Langenfeld. You know, she would send it back to the principal because that's, she's delegating the principal to.
I mean, if I send it to you then.
Usually I let people know what I'm doing.
Yeah, if you, yeah.
And answer collectively and say, I usually will answer you and say, and put whoever is supposed to take that.
Right.
You know, here, I'm responding here and I'm including John. Or maybe the parent is reaching out and a, a board member might be in the communication as well. And I might say, you know, that this is where you start, but always remember, just like you would say to your constituents, if it doesn't work for you, come back to me because I'll monitor it. And so, that's, I, I think, I think as we make, I think there's, there's a, a notion that you can't, this chain of command has gotten in a funny place. And I think we need to really break that down so people feel more confident about what that really means. Here's an example, if, if there's an issue out there and no staff ever learn about it to address it, it's hard to address. And if it's just trying to be resolved by people who may not have the direct inputs and, you know, maybe it's a sidewalk issue, for example. And if, if a community member reports it to a board member and it never gets to facilities, that's going to be a problem. If that makes sense. And sometimes if it comes to me, I can get it to the person faster. Sandy takes a lot of calls during the day. And sends them to the right people. I think the other piece though, for around the chain of communication piece is, and Andrew, you and I have talked about it, that whole embsman piece, just a place to triage calls so people feel their calls are being addressed in a timely and responsive fashion.
I interpret C four as running a school district in a, in a larger sense. Whereas I think Ron is talking about maybe how do we deal with parents and community members? And how that gets taken care of, and that's where I look at that, at that, you know, handling that, that's a different kind of, of way. But this, I look at that as how the, how the superintendent run a school district.
I think Andrew's illustration was, was really spot on. You know, if, if it looks like everything has to flow through one channel, then.
It'll get started.
You've got issues with delegation.
Right, right.
That's, that's how I interpreted that, I don't know.
So, the goal is delegation? The goal is to.
Appropriate delegation.
Appropriate delegation, expect people to do their jobs and allow them to do their jobs.
I also expect the people who are, are doing the delegation to know what they've delegated and what those people to whom they've delegated responsibilities are doing, that they're getting that communication back. So, if I, you know, I, I call Michelle and I've got a question, I've got a concern and, you know, that's delegated or, you know, she, you know, sends me to, to John or whomever, fine, the delegation's happened, but I still have an expectation that she knows what's going on with it. It's not a matter of washing your hands of it, passing the buck, because that's no good either.
Well, and not sending someone through fifteen steps to get an answer either.
That would not be the goal. And if it happens, that's a problem.
Before we leave C, my thought with, with C five, it's really subsumed with personnel matters. It's pretty specific unless, unless you have thoughts about it differently. Recruitment. You had said something about it, Brenda.
Um, sorry, she's talking to you.
C five recruitment.
Oh, yeah, that was the, you know, when we specifically said, we want her more involved in principal hiring. That to me is a, is a recruitment. Follows a formal recruitment process for each hiring opportunity, actively recruits the best staff, that kind of thing. And we could put some, I mean, we could add something in there specifically.
I don't need to add anything, I said, you know, is it?
But you're saying it's more, it's more HR's job?
Well, I'm saying it, I would think that it's, it's part of C three, ah, just leave it.
It's important, you know, whatever, whatever, whenever you collapse something together, then it's, becomes less of the score too.
True. Just leave it.
All right.
We've only taken out A one and A six so far?
Right.
Yes.
In the, the business and finance goals, what I, what I put in the document, and I'll send this to you, and I'm not sure I even printed it. But if you, I'll send you this electronically. One of the things that I thought was important is, is for the board to, to have just even an understanding of the, the budget development process. And right now, we're looking at, with the biennial budget, it's pretty much developed and things have set the course. But as, through time, in the event that we wouldn't, when we did this budget development process, when we were looking at the potential, the, the referendum, without the operational referendum, if you recall, would have cost us a hundred and fifty staffing positions and would have cost us cuts in programming and increase in class size. So, by passing the operational referendum, we were able to maintain and not have to cut. But through that, there is a budget development process and I just linked that in for you so you could see where we went. Really looking at the budget process itself, identifying the key principles through the, the mission and the strategic directions and strategic goals that we have. And then if you look, drill deeper, you can see that we looked at the various strategies and then developed and looked at our resources through that. So, I won't go through it all, but we looked at where's the revenue, what do we need to cut and why? And when we talk about, if we get to that point, and I hope we never do, and I'm hopeful about the work with the Blue Ribbon Commission, but if we ever have to go through a pretty significant expenditure kind of situation, it would be very, very important to bring the community into the conversations if it's going to be a very drastic cut process or even a consolidation. And so, when you're looking at what the reductions were, not just to put a list together and say, well, here's what we can do, but actually have the board provide some feedback on some possible expenditure reductions and then go from there and take that out publicly for an engagement kind of opportunity. And again, I hope we never have to go there, but if we would, then it really looks at what are the budget priorities within that framework? And in this document, you can see that it's really to ensure that everything aligns with district priorities and making sure we have the very best in front of our kids, no matter what we have to, you know, where do you redeploy? What do you stop? What do you freeze kind of thing? So, just to go back to that, but I'll, I'll share that with you. So, in the piece around budget development, that's a really important piece for, for any superintendent to be part of. I also think sometimes there is a, a lack of understanding of, of finance and school finance and how we get the money and what, what you will see. The state of Wisconsin's very interesting in terms of the finance piece. From the perspective that the money comes after, the reimbursement comes after you've spent it. And it's also very programmatically based. In other words, it isn't based on student, it's based on program. So, we have title allocation, we have AGR allocation, we have. And this person that came and did this report for us, for the Blue Ribbon Group, talked about the fact that we're, we're uniquely positioned and perhaps not in the best position for transparency. Agreed that it was probably one of the most opaque kinds of school finance pieces to be able to understand. It's very complex, they've set it up. It's also one of the most, if not the most grant-driven financial piece, financial state. In other words, we just did one with school safety. Now, school safety, every school needs to be safe, right? Every student deserves to have a safe environment, as does every staff. But we have to compete for grants, so then you need people and resource to write those grants to compete. So, it's very interesting, but I think that, that one of the pieces that I would say is maybe there's no metric around this, but I think depending upon, there needs to be a clear understanding somewhere of school finance because you have to be able to talk it and be able to understand where those resources are going in case you need to reallocate or in case you want to reinvest along the district priorities. And having a finance person who knows that is good. But then sometimes you end up not being able to have a really robust conversation around if you want to change some things. So, I just offer that. I don't know where that, where you want to go with this particular, the line items, but.
Well, are we keeping then everything in business and finance in the Michigan document?
I don't know, that's what I'm, I'm just telling you my perspective. And then you have to decide what you want to keep within that framework.
It seems that like there's a, to me, when I read through this, it seemed there's, it seems like there's a lot of detail that's specific to like the facilities.
Right.
Department, you know, you look at the highly effective for that and it's, you know, it's really the, you know, that would be Mike's, Mike's role. I don't know if we need all five of these or if we can wrap it up into.
How about one and five maybe? Or two is actually important as well.
I was probably only going to get rid of three. Three, I mean, three is very technical, up to date with GAAP and state accounting procedures. And three suggests that you know how to do the letter book. But four, I mean, yes, someone else might be writing most of it, but you, I think the superintendent needs to ensure the long-term, you know, facilities management, and I'm not going to lose sleep if others want to strike four, but the only one I would strike is three.
I agree with that.
I think it, it certainly fits with efficiencies in, in school facilities and building maintenance is very, very important because it is a, it is a big ticket item every year too.
So, D three?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
We're good with that?
But not one?
No, I think.
No, one, because they've got to make sure, they've got to make sure that it's happening even if they're not the writer of it.
It doesn't matter if it's not facilities. You said, I thought you were saying it was more facilities driven, so it's not.
Oh, no, I was talking about D four. Specifically.
Sorry, I thought you said one.
Oh, no, sorry.
So, we're just eliminating D three.
I'll keep D four and the rest of them. So, then we're on, next instructional leadership.
And there's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces in here and I just wrote some areas that I thought needed some important work. One of the things that we'll do, once, once we have, I have metrics as I'll go back and we have as measured by, but it isn't always. So, I, I just brought the framework that I use for Melissa. And you can see, we use the same framework and it doesn't really show much. This is what, each of the departments has a plan. And they, they will identify, for example, the district priorities and then put in their baseline data of what they're measuring in each plan and how they would measure academic excellence and whatever indicators that they would have to move toward. Now, there isn't any assessment scores in there by any means, but it's really the contributions they would make to, toward the goal of academic excellence. And I can't read that right now. The policy language to support academic excellence, policy language that would support the legal requirements around student achievement and so forth, I believe is in her buckets. So, each department does put, put these documents together. And obviously, the teaching and learning department would have similar metrics to mine. But I just wanted you to be aware that each department has a full success plan and identifies their goals each year and also puts in evidence of what we would measure and talk about, and then we do a summary. But it's not a me evaluating, here's a three, here's a four. There are a lot of central office documents and it's my understanding, there wasn't a lot of. of evaluation going on before I came. In fact, Mike Stengel said he had never been evaluated, Alan Wagner said he'd never been evaluated a few, so anyway. So I go back to that. So within that bucket, if we want to move further down in the, in the instructional piece, I just added one more for your consideration before and then moving right into the whole instructional piece, I have a whole bunch of metrics and things to talk about, if that makes sense. I did add one more for your consideration, that is a Wisconsin administrative standard. And then I'd like to go back to instruction, and this is the one that really aligns with the superintendent being proficient in the context affects, affecting schools. And it really talks about the collaborative relationships with local, state and federal decision makers and policymakers around, around the school district and what influences the policies and how that affects us. Again, limitations on referendums, for example, will affect our ability to get resources and money into the district. The vouchers, it's a long, a long haul on that one, but the, the piece around vouchers is, is something that continues to be an important part of what we need to be looking at as a school district. I know that when the vouchers, originally Green Bay was targeted to be one of a small groups that had vouchers and that, that changed and because of a lot of work that was done collectively with, with not only myself, but community and stakeholder groups as well as board members. So I do think there's some, some opportunities here. I don't know if it needs a score, it's just one of those areas that I think plays a much bigger role than people may not, people may recognize. Letter grades on schools was something that we spent a significant amount of time working on and making sure that didn't happen so that we'd be able to successfully value our schools. Teachers went and testified with us. Successful referendums are a very important part of what we've done. And the other piece I think about legislatively that has been an important part is really keeping students safe and making sure that their needs are met on a variety of levels. And that's one thing we're looking at right now for special education reimbursement funding, EL funding and so on, so.
So this.
This is, this is from the state of Wisconsin, DPI.
Administrator standard seven?
Administrator is a Wisconsin administrator standard.
Right.
For their superintendents. And it just shows you what they would consider proficient in that standard, so. I put that out there.
Seems like it would go somewhere other than instructional leadership.
It's not intended to, it's a question of, is this something the board would.
Is this something we should add, yeah?
Yeah, are you interested in adding it? And secondly, then I think maybe you and I, Ned, could look at it, we talked about it, is it something that could be embedded somewhere else? As part of it. But when I look at this, I, I just want to make sure that we recognize that the, the political environment that we're in and the opportunities we face collectively around the context of our schools is something that we need to pay some significant attention to in a large district or any district at the, as that, at that matters, as that matters. I think there's a, a much greater role, I think, than it ever certainly used to be and, and will continue to be, from, everything from teacher licensing all the way through to, to student data privacy.
Is there anything in the Michigan document on safety?
Yep. E eight.
Support for students. Yes.
Is this the only place it is?
Oh, maybe that wasn't it, no, it's in there.
It is E eight though.
It is E eight, okay.
Yep, yep. Ensure coherent systems of academic and social supports to meet, and then it talks about maintaining safe and caring, welcoming environments for all students. It talks about that in there as well. So that's your, your MLSS and for both academics as well as for school safety? That's where I saw.
Not much, I mean, it's three, you know, if it's a ninth of a thirty percent of a half, you know, that's about one to two percent of your score unless maybe there'd be a district-wide goal that would tie into that. I'm not necessarily saying we change it, I'm just saying that it's not, you know, a one, a one there, you can still get a three point nine eight if people feel unsafe.
We have, we, to your point, Andrew, we can measure that, we have the metrics in this, in the culture, climate survey around school safety. We also have it in the school perception survey. So we have a fair, a fair amount of data around school safety, which is very important.
Right, it just only fits into a very small segment here, I mean, unless we.
Well, it could, it could be added to that facilities line too, in terms of adding a physical safety on top of emotional safety.
So we've, have we taken out anything besides A one, A six and D three at this point?
We took out.
Can I just say something? You wouldn't lose sleep over, but we did spend a pretty significant amount of time with the community discussing safety to only have.
Oh, I'm just saying though, the difference between one and two still isn't this meaningful percentage. I think it would have to become a district goal to be weighted, which I think is a useful thing to do so that it would be weighted much more heavily. One, one or two makes almost no difference.
Right.
You could get, you could get ones on both of them and still get a ninety-eight percent score, is what I'm saying.
Again, with, with climate and culture and, and district goals, it, it is addressed there as well.
Okay, so that would be.
As far as taking anything away, I, I want to add a whole bunch back in. I consider of these five areas, instructional leadership to be the, really the, the most important one, the strongest one.
Yeah.
Other than E seven, which is student attendance, which is reflected in, on the state report card and would be reflected in number three under component three, student engagement indicators, I, I think they all should be in there. Now, we could talk about school improvement, the plans, that being somebody else's bailiwick, but still, I think that's, you know, obviously the buck stops with you. Curriculum hasn't gotten, well, I shouldn't say it hasn't gotten a lot of notice, but obviously it's very, very important that we've got that alignment and that it's compliant, complying with, with state standards. And as some of these things are evidenced, we're also going to see, just as a, as a side note, evidence of, of delegation. Because when you talk about the school improvement plans and John comes forward with the monitoring plans and that's his responsibility, ultimately yours. Curriculum, Mike and whomever is gonna come to the table about curriculum, but ultimately, there again, it's yours, but, but these are important things. And I, I think it's really critical that the superintendent is shown to be held accountable to school improvement, to curriculum, to instruction.
The piece, yeah, if I could offer, this particular piece, what I was thinking when I put this slide together, I'm looking at it and thinking, what was I thinking? Here is where I have the metrics. I don't have metrics for those, but it isn't that I don't think they're important, I would agree with you. I have no problem with that at all. So that was not to dismiss or.
And, you know, there are a lot of artifacts that support instructional leadership, potential artifacts.
I agree. So if, if, I'm gonna go to, if you look in the document, to the next piece, are we to the, yeah, the student growth model piece, do I wanna, are you good to go there? Okay.
So we're keeping all of E, so we've only removed A one, A six and D three.
Right. And, and again, this.
E seven.
And.
Take E seven out because it's, it's already in another area, that student attendance.
Is everyone okay with that?
Okay. If you look at the piece, I, I'd certainly like consideration of this, I'm not sure how we'd measure it, I haven't gotten that far, but I do think it's important. And that's the, the, that piece that I added around the Wisconsin state standard around context affecting schools. And the piece within there is just, I, I don't even know how you'd measure it, I think to Andrew's point earlier, but it's just one of those pieces that I would want to make sure there was an expectation that that be part of the job. So if you look at, I'm gonna go to the academic excellence and start with the growth piece because that's what the, if you look at page fifteen of your document, of the Michigan document. If you go to the page fifteen of the Michigan document, it starts out and it talks about that student growth. And really what we're looking at is what is the, what is the growth between, we have in our case, the STAR exam, either early literacy or reading of STAR math, and then looking at that grade level reporting, doing a growth model. Now, I think it's really important to recognize that this is just one year's, at least one year's growth, one or more years' growth. If we look, if we look at our current reality, we don't have first grade yet, we will have it next year in that early literacy piece, but we've not been measuring that. Now, for example, here's an interesting piece though, when we start looking at our own students for grade three in reading, from either fall to spring or winter to spring, in grade three, reading eighty-one point four percent made one year's growth. But that doesn't mean they're necessarily proficient, it means they made one year's growth. And that's our challenge and opportunity for many of our schools, is that our students need to make more than one year's growth to be successfully accelerated. Grade three math, we see that we had fifty-one point four percent had at least one year's growth in this last school year. So then we would want to set a metric based in with that, fewer than sixty percent mid-targeted growth and what that looks like across each of the age, age group spans. And the proposal is to do this and we take these metrics in grades three, five, six, eight and ten. So those would be all metrics we would want to be looking at that we.
What about if someone, and certainly that's, you know, we want all students to be growing, but I don't, I don't know if I would want to hold some, I don't know that I would want it to count against the superintendent's statistics for maybe those students who are already in the, the top very few percent. I, I'm not too worried if some of the highest of the high achievers maybe grew point eight grade levels this year, I guess I wouldn't necessarily want that to be a ding.
I think that the one that I, if you look at the bottom of this slide, one of the things we talked about is that we wouldn't include the special needs students who are receiving services for ID, intellectually challenged students or the students who are new to the country that first year, they may not be at that level. I didn't, I didn't put the accelerated student or the gifted student in there, but that would be the piece that we wouldn't put in that aggregate score. But I think a lot of our, our higher need, higher level students are quite successful in making.
But at some point, I mean, at some point, you're.
It's slower.
Well, at some point, you're just about maxing out the test.
Yes.
At some point, there isn't, there isn't a full year of growth that STAR can even measure anymore and if that, then. And I don't, I don't want the superintendent's score to drop two points because of the number of kids who are so maxed out on the, you know, but I, I think, I don't, I mean, I don't know what the right wording is for it, but I'm sure that can be, you know.
We should be able to see that, and then you would, could make that judgment. We should be able to see if we had, if the slow growth was at, at the, you know, at the highest level. The reporting schedule, based on my conversations with people who are doing these assessments, these would be the best dates. And so I'm proposing those, that that would afford, be able to see that, the results through a formal evaluation process that you could do, January, February. I've gotta go back and look at that because you would want the most up-to-date dates, but if these don't work, then I think we just have to look at them. We've got our spring that will work this summer, but then do we have the right fall to spring that will tell us about the full year's growth? But that's an important variable. The next slide just shows you how rapidly certain groups of students need to move up that trajectory. We anticipate that our English language students and our students who receive additional services in that area will probably need to excel at one and a half, one point two five to two, to one and a half years of growth. They need to accelerate to be able to get to, by the time they get to middle school would be the goal. And we measure that, so that would be a metric to share. Another metric to share to demonstrate growth is really around, these are college and career readiness benchmarks that the research would tell us, tell us if a student is on track. Graduation rates are a part of that, but they are a lagging indicator, so we're always a little behind, but it's something to monitor as well. The number of students who demonstrate readiness post-secondary, and that's on the STAR test, so we will be able to monitor that and provide you with that data. Increasing the composite ACT scores, percentage of students enrolled in IB and advanced placement and how they do on their assessments in those college pieces. Those are all college readiness benchmarks for students to be on the trajectory, to be successful. And that progress is just an example of what you'd see for graduation rates. And then moving into accelerated growth, and that's an area that we need to also make sure we're monitoring carefully, and that will show up on the state report card, of course, in that growth model that talks about math and reading and making that progress in that trajectory toward graduation. And again, our goal would be to reduce the number of students that have a gap in that achievement toward proficiency. So we'll set some data and bring those parameters and then agree on what that would look like, and we can provide that data. And then also provide you with, I put a chart in there so you could see a comparative analysis for data. So you'd have the student at the current grade level and you'd see that preliminary data in math, where they started, and then looking at that student and where they were as compared to the total grade count and moving them forward in terms of what kind of growth they made, and then the number of, if they made it to proficiency. And then looking at, there is a correlation depending upon what grade they're in that will align with the state assessment. So the NCE is considered that edge of proficiency, but on our state assessment, it's very interesting depending upon what the content is and what the grade level is, it varies, the window varies. It can go up into the sixty percentile range and a little above, and then I'm understanding some of the seventh grade numbers are below fifty. So it really depends because it's normed, Gwen can say it better than me, but it's, it's not necessarily at fifty. And so we have those data points that we would provide in terms of where they are in the forward exam. And then we can talk about the percentage of students that, that fall into the bucket between forty and sixty-five are those students that are not proficient, but have the greatest opportunity to be proficient. And so really working that data as well. And we do the same for reading as well. So we look at that growth comparison around proficiency, so you'd be able to see all that data. And that would be prior to seeing what happens on the state assessment. So the piece that won't happen is if we do the state assessment piece, we'll always be lagging behind because that won't be out in the middle, in the summer. But we'll have all this data in the summer that should be an excellent predictor of what to expect on the state assessment.
You're not about mostly using our.
Yeah, I think.
Assessments?
Yeah, I think one of the things, the caution always with the state, as you all know, is we've had two years now of forward. Prior to that, we had Badger. Then one year, they threw it out totally. We didn't get any scores. I think that was thirteen, fourteen.
That is a very, you don't, you don't have to say it, because I, it's the politically motivated changes to the test, which in my individual opinion are designed to, and sometimes designed to make public schools look bad, especially schools with a high, free and reduced or minority percentage, so. But the STAR test is a fair and objective thing, and we're reusing it internally.
Yeah, and we're using it to, what we can tell Andrew is how well a student is growing. And that's really what we need to be paying significant attention to. And we also need to be aware that if we have students so far behind, that they have to accelerate their growth. Because one year of growth won't, they'll never catch if they're, if they're below, and that's always that constant. So what we'll do then is go back and look at these data sets and bring them back. But I would like to set some goals around there. I don't, you know, from a realistic perspective, how much anticipated growth and opportunity is there for us in those two areas? And then looking at graduation projections forward as well. Then, then if you move to the personalized pathways, really thinking about how do we measure those buckets and, and really start to hold ourselves accountable. And that really is where the state is going in some regard, saying, you know, as a state and as school districts, you know, do we offer industry certifications and credentials? And is that something that's important to our community and our, and our constituency and our stakeholders? And the answer is yes, and the co-curricular participation and so forth, and the pathways. So I put some areas of consideration that we could certainly monitor metrics on that I think are important. And we know that the co-curricular has a lot to do with students as well. And then the other piece is around engagement, and our goals around engagement. And really thinking about the parent-school climate that we talked about, that we already looked at. And thinking about, we have the YRBS for students survey, and then we have that school climate survey. And if we move forward with the open enrollment survey, we'll have even greater data about why people would come here, stay here, or leave in terms of our, our support for them as well. So I put that out there for consideration.
So are we gonna set goals or measurement for the test, the STAR test?
Well, my thoughts are a little bit different, and, you know, again, I'm gonna point out the note that I passed around before. I'm suggesting we use the state report card as the basis for our measures of learning and growth, since everyone sees that. And what I'm looking at is very similar to what they have here, you know, looking at a score of one as being less than sixty percent, so on and so forth. But here would be the targets for achievement, looking at across all groups, school by school, an increase in proficient and advanced and subsequent decrease in below basic. And to get a four, that would be ninety percent of our sites would have to demonstrate an increase in proficient and advanced and a decrease in, below basic in both language arts and mathematics. For growth, once again, we look at all the schools individually. And then we're looking for an increase in value added across all groups, or you're at or above the state average, whatever that might be. I should say at or above.
Which, which, I'm sorry, are you at, okay. Achievement is proficiency?
I didn't hear you. You back on, back on achievement?
Proficiency and a decrease in basic.
Got it.
Yeah.
So just pushing it all up?
Yeah.
Excellent.
And then repeat what you just said.
For growth.
Yes.
An increase in the value-added score, or you are at or above the state average, or let's say above the state average. The state average is always gonna be a three. That's the, the target.
But then you're allowing schools that reach the state average to not, to not have to grow their students.
You're still showing grow, you're showing, well, it, it goes back to the concern about, what if you get all your kids at proficient and advanced?
Right, but then that goes to the, what your belief is around, do those students deserve to grow? Or do they just sit?
Okay, strike that.
Proficient, I mean, proficient should get growth. I just mean that there's literally a point where you are maxing.
It's hard to get a year's growth.
Or you, you, not just hard, you can't. I mean, at some point.
Well, the STAR test doesn't ceiling, does it? Where's the ceiling on the STAR test?
Well, at some point, you get all the most difficult.
The, the interesting piece, and that's what made DaVinci so.
Yeah.
They grew.
They grew, right.
They grew.
That's how they got to be number one in the.
But I mean, if you're at, if you're a sixth grader functioning at ninth grade and you grow half a year, that's still great. I think that you went up to nine point five in that. I mean, it's, it's also, I guess this is also a small percentage of the overall statistics year or two.
Well, but we have a lot of gifted students that are not at DaVinci too, so it's bigger than just.
Oh, but I'm thinking, even the, the, at most, I would say you'd be looking at two or three percent. Maybe that would be so high that it might not be reasonable for them to grow your. I guess, I, I don't know. I don't know if I trust, I don't know if I trust the state report card. It changes, it's political, it's.
Well, I do trust it. It's what we've got, and everybody's got it, and it's across the state. And, you know, take politics out of it, it's what we've got.
So if they, so then did the superintendent take the hit if they arbitrarily changed the cuts next year? Or the year after? That's my concern, because they've done it.
Yeah, I think, I think what I would offer Andrew is we will have, if that were to happen, we would also have the STAR assessment that would show you where the students were. I mean, they did change the cut score, you're right. And then it, it, this whole piece, but we, I, I would assume we'd have that conversation.
Well, we would, and if you've got that concern, you can always look at comparing to the state averages.
And, and it would go down. You're right. The whole thing, the whole thing dropped.
I've got those data too, I mean, if, but.
The whole thing shifted when they did that.
Uh, for gap closing, once again, an increase, or I'm sorry, a decrease in the average gaps. And then on-track readiness, basically increase or above the state average for on-track readiness. So basically, we're just looking at increases, school by school. And then, you know, if it's ninety percent of the schools, it would be at a four. If it's seventy-five to eighty-nine, it'd be a three. Sixty-one to seventy-four, two. Less than sixty, a one. I throw that out there for consideration.
As long as there's a, I mean, I prefer, I prefer STAR, but I guess I wouldn't necessarily throw out another measure. I just, personally, I think if, I think if the growth scores in, in the bigger public school districts start looking pretty good, I think they're gonna get changed. Because I think there's a, I, I, that's what I think about.
Well, and the thing with the, the thing with the NCEs is that they are, we can predict proficiency on the state test.
You should be able to see.
Based on the, on the, on the STAR test. It's not fifty, like, we've already said, but it's, but it is. Gwen can tell you the number that you need to get on STAR to be proficient on the state test.
Until, until they change the proficiency level on the state test.
Right, so then it's a question of who's your, I mean, I asked this question at one of our data retreats. Then who do you, who do you rely on to set your standards of what's proficient or what's not, if STAR and the state test don't agree?
I think one of the, it's, one of the things that other school districts, large school districts have done is they go to their own internal norm-referenced metrics within them. And that's why the STAR or the MAP testing is often used and reported out to the public as part of their annual report out to the community.
I'm fine with it being both, as long as there's some kind of a backup.
The, the, the piece, the piece is there has to be both, because otherwise I have no way of knowing how my kids are doing. You know what I mean? So that, we will have both. And if there's not the correlation that we anticipate, I have a, I have this piece that Renaissance actually puts out that talks about that correlation. So we're looking, for example, an NCE or norm curve equivalency. In seventh grade math is forty-eight point nine, but in third grade, it's fifty-six point four. And, or that's reading. And in math, the scale scores range anywhere from sixty-one all the way to seventy in grade five. So it really varies with that. But I think in order for teachers and staff to understand where they need to go, they're gonna have to be able to make sure that the students hit these buckets. And if that changes, we'll change them. I mean, I would assume they'll keep calibrating no matter what the state test is. I'm sure they did this across the country for any, anybody that uses this STAR test, for this appropriate state assessment that they're using. So I think it's very, this is, the, the, the part, to Ed's point, the part that's nice about that is it's easy to understand. And it's transparent. And I think the complexities around the STAR test and NCEs, and what does that mean? And how can you be a fifty and still be proficient? And that doesn't make sense, you know. So I, I think the correlates will be there, and, and they should be able to tell if that progress is there. And if there is a huge disconnect, then we have to look at that too, and say, what happened?
I have a question. Do other school districts that are maybe somewhat comparable to our size use the, the state report card?
I actually have Madison's, Madison's annual report.
But for their evaluation?
You know, that I don't know. I know that some use their, their growth around, around their own district benchmarks. And they vary, but I don't know.
Have we looked at that at all?
Looked at what, what other schools?
What other districts have done?
With their superintendent evaluations? Is there a reason why we wouldn't?
Pardon?
Is there a reason why we wouldn't look at that?
I don't know, you find that unless you go, you know, district by district. You had shared an article, you know, that, from that article, that very, very few school districts across the country have student learning accountability measures as part of a superintendent evaluation. Seems counterintuitive, but I mean, according to that article that you had shared, that's kind of the way it is. As far as what's being used, I, I do believe that, you know, question the validity all you want. It's what the public uses. I mean, every time that comes out in the spring, or the summer, when it comes out, fall, whatever time it comes out, I forget now. That's what you hear about, you know. Why are we, why are we here? Why aren't we there? And it's, it's something that you can't hide from. Now, the other measures, the things that are more reliable in terms of informing instruction, if we can blend those or include it as a, you know, corollary to it, great, do it. But I think we need to.
That's where they'll have to set their metrics in order to get these metrics improved. And they already are. They already are. I'm looking at DaVinci's growth. They, the state was sixty-six points out of a hundred thirty-three in each of the categories of English and language arts. DaVinci had fifty in math and forty-five point four in, no, forty-five point four in math and fifty in English. So they had significant growth too, so.
So we're, when you're looking at this on page fifteen, under student growth, where it says ninety percent or more students met the growth target, you want, you're wanting that to read school? Are you, are we gonna be looking at it?
Well, I think, yeah, if, if you go by school, it's gonna be the same thing, because it's based on the students.
Right, but I think if we change it to school, then it's clear that that's actually what we're looking at as opposed to rows and rows and rows of.
Sure.
Random students. And then, so that's your student growth part, the progress toward district-wide goals. Is that your component three that you're?
Yeah.
Putting forth?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, these are not necessarily our district goals as opposed to the academic excellence, engagement, thriving workforce, personalized pathways. I mean, obviously academic excellence we get at with the student learning and growth.
The, the on-track readiness would certainly be there, though.
Yeah, no, I'm just looking at the component three.
Well, I would say we either change the term district goals to something else, or scratch all those and put the district goals in there.
Yeah, and that's where I was coming from too, so, I mean.
And why is that?
Because we don't have a district goal, I mean, our district goals are academic excellence, engagement, you know, those four big buckets. So it's, we might need to change that if we leave this list the same, is what I'm saying. I mean, the engagement gets at, I mean, this is all more engagement than anything else.
Yeah, I mean, we change the term to engagement goals unless you want to, again, you know, put the district priority goals in there.
Yeah, but then we're recreating a whole new.
Yeah.
Pile, I think. I think it's easier just to put engagement goals.
So you're keeping absenteeism and dropout, so you're scratching it?
No, that's part of the state report card. No, yeah.
Keep it, yeah.
But these are all engagement goals, essentially. They all fit.
Okay.
Under the goal of engagement.
So, so what? What happens if? What happens if the superintendent? There's certain, there's certain things that a superintendent can't do right away with staffing if things are really a problem in a couple places. There's so much contracts and protection built in, so what, like, how do you? I mean, generally speaking, yes, I'm, I agree with holding the superintendent responsible there. But what about, what about situations where they're doing everything that they can do, and there's a couple places where there's a problem that they can't really make a change for a year or two or however? Is that fair?
Well, I would, I would hope, maybe it's just a hope, that those conversations would be had as part of the process. So if there was a specific area of need, maybe there was a leader who was on a plan or something, and there was things that weren't moving in the right direction, the board would have that understanding already. And then the question is, is that the same standard if you know something's awry in that school? And it may be perfectly fine to, I don't know. I mean, I think it could vary. You could have a situation where a circumstance in a, I mean, I think we can always look at that. I would assume that the board would be open to having those conversations.
I think the board would be open to having the conversations, but if it, so then theoretically, the board would say, if we're looking, if it, something affected student growth, you're on the bubble. It was, it was seventy-three percent, but we know something happened way out of whack at one building. And we know that the superintendent has directed extra resources. We might, the board might decide to go three on that, given special circumstances, because they'd have the right to do that?
Yep, yeah.
Right, there'd be that option.
I mean, there's always that option to make a judgment call.
Well, I, I didn't know if there was in something like the, I think there, well, I think there always should be.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
No, I think, I, I don't think you wanna get into cooking the books that way. You go with the numbers, what they are, and then, you know, if there's, if there are circumstances that, that need to be put out there, you put them out there, and, you know, you, in your summation, you, you explain that. But if, if it's seventy-three percent, don't call it seventy-five, because you, you know, seventy-three is seventy-three.
Well, you would have the data to support it, so you could.
But where are you supposed to do that? Just know that you're gonna.
You explain it, I mean.
Yeah, part of the evaluation includes narrative, so it would say, you know. that it's seventy-three, however, you know, here's this caveat and, I mean, this is a...
You can't really say the caveat in a public document because it's a...
Sure you can, sure you can. Without, without naming names and what have you.
You don't have to name the school.
Just that, you know, we understand there are situations at, at one of the schools regarding, you know, a tragedy that occurred with such and, with, you know?
I'm not thinking of that thing, I'm thinking of a different kind of thing where you can't...
You still can.
You can still reference a personnel issue, but not name names.
I, I see.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, we have to remember that this is, you know, this is meant to be a goal-setting, continuous improvement process. It's not just, it's not like we're doing this superintendent evaluation and then we're turning it over to somebody else to decide, you know, whether superintendent stays or gets a raise or those kinds of things.
I, I think that the, the public's, the public's focus will be on the, will be on the numerical percentage because that's easiest to, I mean, that's the, that's the easiest to digest. It's, you know, I think the public, you know, at least quite a few, I, I certainly got feedback that the writing it on a, you know, writing it as a, a letter and getting consensus on it is not the way to go. So, I think there will be a lot of focus on the, the number.
Can you, can you actually, so we don't do an evaluation to determine contract or raise negotiations at all? Has nothing to do with it?
No, I'm saying that, that it, it all comes together as part of that. So, if, you know, a number is low here and then the score is not as high as we want to, doesn't mean that we're tied to saying, you know, she doesn't get a raise. We're, we're saying, okay, here's the number, here's, here's why this is, here's the goal, the plan for, for making sure that that, that particular piece improves, and then we still make that decision.
If there are extenuating circumstances, you document that, you're, you're fair about it. The numbers are what they are, and there may be extenuating circumstances over which the board administration had little or no, no control.
But you're still, at the end of the day, making decisions, hopefully considering what's in the evaluation?
I would hope so.
Right, that's the idea.
There, there might be, there might be a reason that some, there might be some reason that a score was, I don't know, a two, a two point nine that you might be happy with, nonetheless continuing because there are some extenuating circumstances. There also could be a situation where a score is three-one, but the, you might, the board might not want to, I mean, if that, it's not three point, three point two-five means you're continuing, three point six means a raise, three point, yeah, so. Yeah.
So, I, I do have questions about component three, what's in there. And I'm wondering, for climate and culture, well, I guess I'm wondering, well, I'll go back to this. The climate and culture piece seems like it's in, already in some of the areas in terms of staff relations, community relations, you know, parent feedbacks, the survey stuff we get, all of that is...
But the thing is here with the surveys, we would be able to have a number attached to it.
Okay, so that's, so you're looking for the climate?
They're being, they're being conducted certainly, and it's reflected there. But, you know, what are we, what are we learning from it and are we improving?
Okay, so then what's your measurement for climate and culture?
At this point, I'm just saying, you know, improvement, I guess, you know, like, you know?
Okay.
I don't want to get more specific around...
You would set a target and then, you know, we have, we have enough survey data that would tell us from here to here what we want to see is improvement, absolutely.
I'm also, I'm not sure I'm comfortable having open enrollment as one of the measurements for this, only because I think, I'm not sure that, that, that it's, well, I guess it depends on what you're gonna measure before I say if I'm comfortable or not. Because when we have sixty, whatever it is, two percent of our students that have never come, then how do you judge what part of that the superintendent is responsible for versus, you know, they live all of the other, all of the other factors?
Take, take those out and then you look at a, a ratio between out and in and, you know?
I think, yeah.
And just look at the, yeah.
Yeah, one of the, one of the cautions, though, when we talked about this today, is that we had a number of students, for example, that tried to open enroll in very, very full schools. So, they were denied that school. Example being Preble, for example. They took all the inter-district kids first, students first, which makes sense. Our own students first had priority. But then there were a number of schools where there just wasn't capacity. And what they'll also do then is offer an alternate high school or middle school or elementary.
Maybe what you do then is you look at applications in and applications out.
Yeah.
Taking out those who have never been, been here. I mean, you know, if there's fifteen kids that couldn't get in because there's no room at the inn, I mean, that's, that's sad. But I mean, it's still showing that people want to get in here.
There was, I think, I guess, and I don't have the exact numbers, but it was, I think, they had, they looked at a hundred something and then, we'll know more. But I know they said, I asked roughly, how many, couldn't you get their first choice? And it was, if I recall right, it was about fifty, which is, you know, I think that's our challenge and opportunity is that there are schools right now that people want their children in that are very full. And so, then the, the intercity or the inter-district students get first priority. And then their siblings, now we've added that, so their siblings would also be able to get in. And then, and then that, anybody from outside trying to come in may have a challenge, so.
Do we have any numbers of students that are at Da Vinci of the amount of students that actually stay in the district, go on to high school, that would, don't choice out?
I'm sure we have that number. I don't know what it is, but it's a good question.
And they're actually not choicing out, they're choosing not to choice in. Because we have, it's such a high choice in school that a lot of the students that don't stay in the district are going back to their home.
Well, I guess that's what I mean. Do we have any of that somewhere to show?
We would, we would have that data. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
But they have friendships, they have relationships, they're...
Yeah.
And I think the other piece right now, from, from my understanding, is there a number of students who qualified from outside that, that right now the space is an issue?
Yeah.
So, you're saying we have a lot more students choicing in or able to come to the district that aren't in the boundaries?
Correct.
Right.
Wait, rephrase that. What'd you?
See, we have a lot of students that are coming from DePere, coming from Eschewabnon to Da Vinci.
To Da Vinci, right.
So, we're taking more students from out of the district into Da Vinci?
No.
No, no, that isn't what I...
But what you're saying is they're actually going back to their...
When they go to high school? Yeah, it seems, I went to their, they had a parent meeting a month or two ago. And it seems like they, the tendency is for them to go back to the high school where their neighborhood is. So, if they came from DePere, they're going back to DePere High School. If they came from Preble, they're going back to Preble High School.
Right, and I, okay, so, but what I'm saying is, do we, so you're saying there are more students though that we, that would be hard to look at because there's students that are going back to DePere versus they're in the Green Bay boundaries?
Oh, we can get the numbers.
No, we can look at it, yeah. It's not hard to get that information.
So, I want to make sure I understand the question. So, that, how many students who are, who open enrolled in to Da Vinci from outside the district stay in the district?
Well, how many in general are actually staying in the district?
For high school, right?
And then maybe, how many of those in general, and then how many of those are actually going out of, out of the district to high school?
Okay.
Did they start, did they, right, that, did they start in the boundaries?
Oh, I see, yeah.
So, we have the Green Bay student and the open enroll in student.
And did the Green Bay students stay and did the open enrollment students stay?
Where do they go next?
Where do they go, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's see what I can get on that. The other piece I do know, though, is that they had a number of students, and I don't know if they were late from the district or, or from outside the district that qualified that we didn't have space for. And there was a significant number from what I understand, too.
Well, at some point we'll get, I mean, technically, based on the capacity of that school and the percent of the gifted population, you know, we get to a point where it's all our district students and we don't have room for any open enrollment. Because we give priority to our own...
To our own students.
Students that live in the district boundaries.
Let me have to do, let me have to add something, so.
Yeah, we could, right.
We have, I mean, that's, you know, you have to, this is...
People have mentioned that more than once, to have one on either side of the river.
I mean, this is, I mean, number one, it's a good offering for kids that we offer and other places don't. But also, it's, it's dog eat dog and we don't need to be losing enrollment.
So, are we going to include open enrollment?
I think we, we can, but I think we need to look at, you know, the metrics that we choose to, to assess that. And I think it would be helpful to determine that after...
The study.
The study. I mean, they might be able to help us.
Tell us where that need is.
Yeah, or tell us, where's the best, what, what are the best metrics to follow with open enrollment to really get the information that you want about, you know, how you're doing with, with that? I'm not, I'm not sure what those are in terms of attracting versus not losing versus...
The things that we can have the greater impact.
Yeah, yeah.
On changing.
Right.
Well, there's, there's, it's recruitment retention.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the retention piece really boils down to customer service.
Yeah.
As a general rule.
Except if they've never been here, they have no idea what...
Right, but I'm talking about the, the students that are currently being served.
Right.
And then it may also boil down to, and this came up sitting in the boundary committee, just listening, is that there is a clear issue around people understanding and recognizing what we even offer across the district and what that, those opportunities are. And I, I, the, the comment was made, well, you should put it on the website. Well, it's on the website, but again, if you're not looking there, do you know where to go? So, you know, one of the, one of the pieces that did come out that they're doing in another district is they literally do like the fairs and go out and do, do big promotional fairs so that families can see what the offerings are. You know, because we have some really extraordinary opportunities for our students, whether it be IB or fine arts or, you know, we have a lot.
Out of curiosity, where do, where do districts hold those? Do they hold them in schools? Do they hold them in, in a, in an off-site place, off-site location?
Well, it depends. I mean, I, I, I don't know for sure. I know that in my experience where we had magnets, we held them off-site actually.
Yeah, yeah.
And they were always well-attended and people got very interested. Now, I know with the fine arts strand in sixth grade, they held parent meetings at, at Washington. But they also went, Jen and, and, I don't know who went with her, went into the elementaries and talked to the students about the opportunities and offerings and, and got enrollment that way. So, yeah, I, I, I think it varies. But I think sometimes having it close to where people are on Saturdays isn't a bad idea. And they bring their children. And sometimes having students perform or be part of the, the talking is always healthy and important for other parents to see what the students look like and how they feel about their program in their schools.
We can't say for sure that the sixty-two percent of people never stepped into the school. They could have done a tour.
Right, yeah.
That would be accurate.
We can't say that they didn't actually come in.
They never, they never enrolled.
They never enrolled, yeah. I don't know how you...
That would be accurate.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can't.
It'd be hard to...
Yeah, that's hard to quantify. I don't know that there are a lot, but you don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know.
You're right, you don't know that. So, next steps, will we be talking?
Well, I think, let's see, next steps. Well, we've, we've talked about what we're getting rid of in this, in this form.
Adding back.
What, what specifically are we adding?
What did we add back that we took out?
Well, I mean, with E.
Oh, yeah, no, that wasn't, she was just giving us examples of...
I was just saying, those are the places I, no, I didn't take them out. I was, those were the places I had metrics.
You had metrics for.
Because I had numbers, I didn't have curriculum numbers.
We took out E seven, but the rest are...
I have survey data, I have student enrollment.
The rest are all in.
So, no, I wasn't suggesting we take them out.
So, somehow we need to change this to, I mean, we just need to make it a document that's reflective of what we took out. I'm thinking we need to figure out a place...
Is that copyright?
Yeah, I was wondering about that too. It doesn't...
It's a state document, so.
Is it a state document or a state school board association?
It's association, it's...
I don't see a copyright mark on it.
Yeah, I don't see copyright on here.
No, I didn't either, I, I didn't look for it, but I...
You probably should double-check.
The piece, the piece that's interesting, and I don't know if you, if you saw this, but they actually have a school board piece around it where there's, there's training and questions in terms of the tools.
Can we, can we quick run over the end of it, though? There's a, it's about when you get everything together and then you have a meeting?
Well, the part where this, there's, there's no part where the board meets alone.
Well, yeah, I just, where is, oh my God, there's so many pages.
Oh, page nineteen, maybe, during the meeting? Is that what you, yes, okay.
Is it consensus that involves a closed session?
The page?
That would be twenty.
Oh, page twenty.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not okay with any, anything that suggests this be a consensus decision because that means minority opinions are just tossed. That's what it means. So, it's not supposed to mean that, but it's, it's what it means. But as far as I'm concerned, as far as I'm concerned, I'm, after page sixteen, I'm, I'm, I'm done. And I figure we have existing procedures for when we evaluate and, and all that, and practices. So, I guess I just kind of, I, I have concerns about it too, but this, to me, was about the instrument. And I think the instrument ends on page sixteen.
Well, and it says, number three, board of education moves into closed session. Then the superintendent remains present throughout the session unless he or she chooses to excuse him or herself.
Yeah, why do they?
One, one second, Ron, that, that's just a suggestion from the Michigan Association. This, we're not...
No, we're not going to...
Can we talk about that?
Pardon?
Can we talk about that?
Well, like Andrew just said, we've got a process already that, if you think about what we did in January, you know, it reflected a lot of that where the superintendent shared with us what she had and then we met privately. And, you know, we developed our, our evaluation. And I would assume we would continue that way, that, you know, superintendent would be with us.
We did, but then we had to revise it.
Pardon?
We did do that, but then we had to kind of revise and, you know, change it a bit.
Right, so that's why we're creating a...
Our minority opinions included.
In the, in the write-up, in, in the written document at the end of it all?
Well...
Or in the, I mean, in the numbers that it is?
The numbers, it will be, but in the narrative part of it.
In the numbers, it will be just because it's average.
Right, but I mean, in the narrative part.
That's a good question. I mean, I think it should.
I think it should too.
I mean, we, we generally function as a board of the whole.
What does that mean? Can you say what that means? We function as a board of the whole?
It means as one person, we don't have the power to make policy and rules because we vote as a group of seven. So...
Well, what I would see is, in, in the comments section, let's look at in areas of professional practice, you keep the comments section as objective as possible as well. You include... Well, what I would see is, in, in the comments section, let's look at in the areas of professional practice, you keep the comments section as objective as possible as well. You include what was raised. That it's not, we all think everything is great. It's, these are the, these are the issues that were addressed and are subject for, you know, the comments that were, were presented. We wouldn't identify that, oh, Dorf said this and Sitnikow said that. It's, these were the comments that were, are appended to this, you know, set of rubrics. So, in that sense, you know, you would have the, anyone would have the opportunity to make sure that their voice is heard.
So are minority opinions included in our next evaluation?
Well, he just described how it would be.
Well, but how would that, so how would that look? I mean, I'm just going to stick with the issue of, the sample issue of legislative advocacy because I think we're, we're clearly exceptional at it. We don't always get listened to as much as we want, but we get listened to more than I think we would if we didn't do a good job of advocacy. So, five, five board members think the legislative advocacy is, is better than sliced bread and two board members think it isn't nearly enough. Do the two get to share their opinion or are they just outvoted in the final document or, or what?
And that's why I say that, in the, in that document, in the narrative part, you keep it all objective. And I might say it just that way. In discussing legislative advocacy, five members of the board were, were very satisfied with the superintendent's performance. Two members of the board are not specific, add whatever specifications you want, and then, then it's there.
So it'll be there.
I don't see why it shouldn't be, yeah. No, I, I think in the end, we need to sign off on a, on a document that we're, we're all comfortable with. And if that means that you or I or anybody looks at a comment in any of the sections, okay, I'm looking at staff relations and, and, you know, everybody else thinks that, you know, there's all kinds of room for improvement, but I think it's the best thing since sliced bread, well, that should be said as well, so. Because that can go both ways. And, and I think the opportunity should be there. And then it's presented from the board as a whole. But that doesn't mean that we all agree on everything or we all say the same thing.
Imagine how you could.
Here it is.
There's no way to, yeah. It's not a practical goal to think that we're all going to agree on it or even come close maybe.
Okay, so, we'll figure out how to make this, Ed and I can figure out how to make this ours, make sure there's not a copyright on it. And, and then also I think we'll consider the, what do people think about adding the Wisconsin Superintendent Standard Seven somewhere in here? I'm not sure where it fits. But is that something...
Well, here, here's my thought on that, because this is not a goal-setting document. You set goals, Michelle?
Pardon me?
You set individual, you set goals for yourself?
Yes.
Then I think what, what should be done with that standard seven is that should be something that you include as one of your, your goals and then how that's measured, so.
But if it's, if it's part of her goal and it's not in here and...
Well, what we can do, and it's, it, it doesn't show off well here, but they do address it, but I think of instruments that we've used in the past, instruments similar to this, that do have a section for the practitioner's goals.
Oh, okay.
What are your goals? What was your goal? What's your unit of measure? And then you respond to that.
All right. All right.
So, so just to clarify though, if, if it's not a board goal and it's not a priority, I, I'm trying to get a sense of where folks are at with that. Is that still an expectation? I believe it's in the job description. So, I would assume that, you know what I'm saying? I just want to...
You know, you write it up as a leadership goal, as a professional, professional development goal.
Yeah.
But if it's not a board goal, then, then why would she spend a lot of time doing it compared to all the other things that are board goals?
Professional growth.
Well, but this isn't a professional growth. This is an advocacy for, I mean, this is, I mean, it should be a board goal.
Is there a matrix for that?
It's what keeps us...
Um, there, there are some really, there's, there's value, political peace and wins is really something that's been part of the training for superintendents, you know, so. But I think it's, it's hard to measure.
What we can do is...
Can we just add it as an item and create a matrix? I mean, you only...
Well, I think what we could do is, play again with this, this ten percent part with the engagement. Maybe come up with another name there and, and put it with that, with that component three.
Legislative advocacy, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it...
I, I think it's really important. We have, we have a meeting set up with the legislators this week. I mean, I, I think some of the, I think about the conversations even with the after-school programming on the federal level that we took a position on and supported and, and now we have the resources to do after-school programming. There's a lot of moving parts all the time that take a lot of attention at different times. And I think that both at a federal and state level, we have to be mindful that there's a lot of resource tied with that and a lot of opportunity that could be problematic for our kids and our families if we don't attend to that. And that's why there's whole associations around that at the state level for superintendents to stay involved regardless of the size of the district. So, I just put that out there. It's far, sometimes in, in this climate, it's been probably far greater in this timeframe. It's a different place in time.
Yes.
Than, than perhaps maybe Michigan is all swimmingly swell politically.
Nope.
Just maybe.
Why doesn't Wisconsin have? Why do we have to go to Michigan? Why don't they have one?
Uh, they don't.
No, they don't.
I don't know.
I mean, they sure spend a lot of time sending meetings.
The School Board Association? You know, I think, I, I, I keep wondering if that is one of those things that pushes into local control again. You know, I mean, I think that what it does then is creates inconsistencies and creates, again, more work.
I think you hit the nail right on the head. I mean, the long history of local control and...
There's good and bad.
A lot of things that could and should have been handled that way just...
Were.
Just weren't.
Yeah.
So, then you figure it out.
All right.
And we've looked at a variety of things, so.
So, anything else?
Anything else, otherwise I'll...
Yeah, so are we doing something in July and what is that going to look like when we do that?
I would like to synthesize what happened, but I would like to be able to populate some of these areas to be able to bring that forward. What's hard is that all we'll have, if we just go to the state assessment, is we can, we can lay that all out of what the, what last year's assessment looked like. And that would be your baseline within that framework. You could do some, and we've got, we've got the survey data as well to, to be able to do point-to-point certain survey data. But again, we've got baseline data. It's the first year. So, we'll have all the metrics to look at that we'll be looking at then in the fall. But we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the state report card till the fall to compare it to last year.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we, I mean, there's, I'm wondering if we, you know, right now we do July and January. If we look at a schedule in terms of what's in here and a schedule of what makes sense, you know, we still have to have a... We still have to have the summative evaluation at some point, and then we do that in January because it's, that's when contracts come out and, and all of that happens after, after that. I don't, and I don't know that we're, I'd have to look in if there's any legal or state regulations that tell us when we can or cannot evaluate. But I'm almost wondering if we, if we look at what makes sense in terms of, you know, if we're using school report card as a metric, that we do it right after the school report cards come out.
That's probably December.
And then, and so have, you know, and then so maybe we have our, the summative evaluation in December. And then, but then there's the schools, there's, there's the survey, you know, that come, we usually get those results in the summertime. I suppose we could do summer. If we, if we move the evaluation till, I guess we still can do it in January. Then we'll have, we'd have the school report cards.
You'd have, you'd, you'd have all your data.
Yeah. So then the question becomes, you know, what do we, what do we want to do in the summertime in terms of a formative? You know, do we want to do this entire thing? Do we want to say as a group, you know, let's focus on these three areas and have a formative assessment around those?
Well, I, I think that with, for the, for the formative, the first half of that, the, you know, the fifty percent professional practices, those five major components there are, are probably sufficient. You still get a numerical score, but it, it addresses things that you could really do anytime.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I think for this time, if, if we've got some data, just at least providing a baseline and it can help us work through the process, we, you know, take that into consideration.
Well, we could use last year's, yeah, we could use last year's report card just as a...
Yep.
A baseline in anticipation of having next year's.
And that will help us with looking at where we would hope to be in December.
Right.
And I really would advocate for December rather than waiting to January.
Well, December is when, would be when the report cards we anticipate.
When do they come out?
End of November.
Middle of November, I think.
End of, okay, so we could schedule it.
November twelfth last year was the date that...
We could...
How do you know?
It's common knowledge, Michelle.
November twelfth, okay.
So we could schedule something then for, we'll schedule something in early December then, or end, well, probably right after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that makes really good sense, because you'd have all your data sets by then.
Okay. So then we'll put that on our agenda for September to schedule it. If I don't get it on the agenda, then I forget. So I'll put that on our agenda for September, so we get that on our calendar. Okay. All right, so for, and speaking of calendars, should we look at July? My July is awful. Just saying.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, I gotta ask those questions.
Yeah, okay. Can we look at August?
I want to give myself some time to get this together.
Actually, the first, the first week of August would work better for me. No, the one that starts with the thirty-first of July.
Or the thirtieth of July?
Oh, yeah, thirtieth. Well, I'm not here the thirtieth, so it would have to start the third.
That doesn't count.
So it's not the first full week, all right. I'm available the week of the thirtieth, but not the thirtieth. And then I'm also available the following week.
Okay, but not the thirtieth, but any other day that week?
Yes.
I'm supposed to be at a conference.
Well, when is your administrative end service? I mean, the principals come back.
That's usually the first, yeah, a couple days.
Yeah, that's, it starts to push it.
How about the week of the sixth? We have a board meeting that week.
How about Wednesday, the eighth?
At least everybody's around. Oh, God.
Here, I think that's that layer. Let's see if she's got it. Okay, go to August. I think that's one of our...
Good on the seventh, eighth, or ninth.
I'm good on the seventh and the ninth, but not the eighth.
I'm not good on the ninth or tenth. I'm good on the eighth.
How about the seventh?
How about the seventh?
Uh, should be okay.
Tuesday, August seventh?
The, this evaluation.
See, maybe we went the second weekend. Calling, I'm phoning a friend.
Does the seventh work for you? It works for you, Michelle?
I'm not sure.
Andrew?
Let me see if it's the following week.
Good.
Let me see, I'm not seeing.
It's not the thirtieth, so you're...
Yeah, we made the admin retreat actually the following week, so that, okay, so that would work. Which day do we want to do it?
August seventh.
August seventh?
Perfect.
Okay, what time?
There's a how LMC ribbon, or ribbon cutting at ten AM.
So, time?
Five.
Five?
Five?
Five. Okay, five o'clock on the seventh.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Otherwise I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor for adjournment?
Yes.
I opposed?
Yeah.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.